Can someone take my big head off the screen, Amy?
Hi.
Hey, good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Jessica, are you virtual today?
Yes, I am. I have a wicked cold, COVID negative.
Okay, that's good.
It's tis the season for it all, right?
I know. And it's so beautiful outside today.
I know, except there's pollen everywhere, like my car is covered.
I'm literally going to an allergy specialist because I've been like sneezing up the storm and I don't know how to like, I don't know what to take.
Good idea.
But I have exhausted the over-the-counter options and they're not working. So I am gonna say that. Um. He said I'm not getting any sound.
That's our.
This one's working.
Hi, Chris. I'm not sure who took it up.
Can you hear me, Alicia?
Yes, we can hear you.
Loud but not clear.
This one's on. So those of you that are in Zoom, if you don't mind, please mute your microphones. Thank you. So mentors and mentees. Steve Fries, I'll turn it to him for that, okay?
Steve, you're doing mentors and mentees, right?
I'm calling this meeting of the Newington Board of Education to order. Today is May the 11th, the time now is 7:03 PM. As you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'm gonna ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Michael Branda.
Here.
Danielle Rose.
Here.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Here.
Richard Laverrier.
Present.
Paradi, here. Sam Sharma.
Loud but not clear. This one's on. So those of you that are in Zoom, if you don't mind, please mute your microphones. Thank you. So mentors and mentees. Steve Fries, I'll turn it to him for that, okay?
Steve, you're doing mentors and mentees, right?
I'm calling this meeting of the Newington Board of Education to order. Today is May the 11th, the time now is 7:03 PM. As you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'm gonna ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Michael Branda.
Here.
Danielle Rose.
Here.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Here.
Richard Laverrier.
Present.
Paradi, here. Sam Sharma. Jessica Weaver.
Here.
Sam Sharma here.
Anastasia Young.
Present.
Everybody is present.
All right, we are going to now move on to item B, Presentation of Awards and Proclamations. First off, I'm going to read the resolution honoring the Newington School nurses. She's participating online, all right. Very good. Whereas Wednesday, May 11th, 2022, has been proclaimed as Newington High School Nurses Day, and whereas Newington School nurses help to foster a healthy, nurturing community in which our children can learn and grow, and whereas Newington School nurses are the first and sometimes the only line of defense against the illnesses and conditions our students face, making their contribution to the education and welfare of the student population invaluable. And whereas Newington School nurses, by nature of their profession, are called upon to take on roles beyond that of health provider, acting as teacher, confidant, mentor, and friend to the students of Newington. And whereas Newington School nurses are dedicated to the success and wellness of Newington's future generations, therefore, we do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 11th, 2022, as Newington School Nurses Day. Be it resolved that we urge all of the citizens of our community to join with us in actively expressing gratitude to all Newington School nurses. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Newington Board of Education is directed to spread this resolution upon the minutes of this meeting and to provide a suitable copy for presentation. Thank you very much. And at this time, we have Mercy Heatherington joining us online. Would you like to go ahead and share?
One letter unmute.
Did you want to say something, Mercy? You're having trouble with mute. If you can do it from the controls.
Mercy, are you able to do it now?
Yes, thank you. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm here also with Kristin Minor, who is the E-Green Nurse. And on behalf of all the nurses, I humbly accept this proclamation. And I just want to say I appreciate every one of you and the support that you have given us. It has been quite a two-year ride with COVID, and I cannot say enough about the nurses of how they've gone over and beyond just making sure the schools and the staff and students stay safe and healthy amongst all the daily duties that they have. I can't hear anything.
Dr. Fletcher, you're on mute. The Helen Nelson Conference Room is on mute. So Deb, if you could.
Thank you for everything you do, by the way. This is Richard.
I don't know, did we lose everyone?
No, I'm still here.
No, it sounds working in the room, but they're working on it right now.
It's working or not working?
We can hear you now.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Did we have any nurses that are visiting online that would like to speak?
Hi, everyone. My name is Kristin Minor. I'm the E-Green Nurse. And again, I just want to reiterate what Mercy said. We thank you all so much for all of your support, the board, all the faculty members, staff, and all of our students and our families. We couldn't do what we do without you guys. We work for you every day. And we appreciate everything you do to support us. So thank you.
Oh, thank you. So at this time, I'll open it up to board comments and board members here. Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say thank you, especially to the nurses that I have had contact with, Anna Reynolds and Martin Kellogg. Few too many times for my liking this year and last year, but appreciate, and Mercy too, I contacted you as well. But just want to thank you, you know, not just COVID, but you also take care of students with allergies and medications. And there's day-to-day stuff that you have done for years. And then on top of it, pandemic happens. So thank you for everything. We appreciate you and congratulations.
Thank you. Anyone else here? Go ahead, Ms. Hutt Wagner.
I think you just wanted to say a heartfelt thank you for everything that you do always, but especially, I know that in the past two years, you've just gone above and beyond for students, for teachers, for parents, for families, for our community as a whole. So just heartfelt thank you for that.
Well, thank you. And online, oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. I just want to give our school nurses and Mercy Heatherington, who I work with very closely, the highest accolades for getting us through COVID. I know we're still kind of dealing with some of it, but we're really coming on the bright side of it. And in no small thanks to them for all they've done, the types of job responsibilities they've had to endure over the past two years. Leave me with, the only word that I can come up with is heroic. So please accept our gratitude and sincerest thanks for all your efforts throughout this pandemic and always. Thank you.
Thank you. And online, we have first Sam Sharma.
Yeah, I want to quickly thank all the nurses. I mean, as a parent, I've gotten those phone calls from the nurses and, you know, how you took care of my kids, then I came, picked them up. And but, and also like through COVID, I mean, thank you for going above and beyond, you know, really appreciate everything that you do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Anastasia Young.
Hi, I just want to say thank you and congratulations to all the nurses. I know the pandemic has been a struggle for not just you, you know, all of us, but more specifically you. And thank you for keeping our children safe. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Jessica Weaver.
I think this is like my third time saying thank you for this particular award. And I think it's just, every year, I feel like it gets more and more. The weight of it, the gravity of it, is only amplified because of the last two years. That was definitely not in your job description. I'm pretty confident of handling a school district of 4,000 students during a global pandemic. Pretty sure that wasn't in your job description. And yet you went above and beyond and met that, exceeded that, and we cannot be more thankful to you. Mercy, for leading the team of nurses. Kristin, thanks for being on to be able to do that. It's not just blue forms, Epi pens, Band-Aids, tooth, you know, tooth falling out. It's everything. And that's just like the day, and that's just an hour of the day, right? So just thank you for everything you do that is not seen on a daily basis out in the community, but is really felt throughout the community. So congratulations. This is always well deserved. But thank you so much for everything that you do, not just the past two years, but getting us through those past two years and for the future, hopefully, a little less and more in line with your original job description. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Richard Laverrier.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Yes, thank you, nurses, frontline, first line, doing things from being a nurse, being a teacher, being a mom, being a dad. We appreciate everything you do, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And also, Mr. Sharma, if you don't mind, put your hand down. Thank you. Okay. So thank you once again to all of the nurses, and we do really appreciate everything that you do. So moving on, we are going to now recognize our board student representatives. So it's my honor, and it truly is, this evening in recognizing our two student representatives who are serving on the board during this school year. Vidisha Thacker, grade 12, and James Vendetti, grade 11. So the board and I want to thank Vidisha and James for participating in the Newington Board of Education meetings, their leadership within the school community, and for demonstrating exemplary leadership skills. So we do have framed plaques that are going to be presented to you personally. So in the meantime, let me just hold them up here so everybody in the room can see them. I didn't want to take your computer. I think I can get them both. As the night goes on, maybe not, but, all right. So these are theirs.
And they are online this evening.
And they are online, so we're going to give them an opportunity at this time to share.
Vidisha, if you don't mind, I want to go first. All right, thank you. So this has been, wow. It's just been a very, very fun experience to just get a, I don't know, like have a bird's eye view of like how all of this stuff happened. Literally a bird's eye view because, you know, my camera angle is on top of all of you right now. But it's nice to just see how the inner cogs of the education system in this town works. And I've loved getting to know each representative. I've loved getting to know like this system and how it works. And I've loved being involved, being able to have a voice and being able to have, like to represent my school and my classmates. Like that's just been, wow. Just thank you for that opportunity. It has been, wow, just thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Just to add on to what I'm, first, thank you for honoring us and for me being a part of the Board of Ed and being a Board of Ed rep has been one of the highlights of my time at the high school. And I don't want to miss this next year. And I will also like to thank Jimmy for being my partner in crime, all these meetings.
Well, thank you very much. All right, board comments. Go ahead, Daniel.
So thank you both. I know that some of these meetings go a really long time. And you guys stick it out, and having a student voice is so important because that's why we're here. And Vidisha, I don't know you well, but Jimmy is always that happy. I'm gonna tell you, I've known him, I think, since what, you were in sixth grade? And you, he, like both of them are just, they're that dedicated. And so thank you for being you and being someone to kids look up to. And I hear your names at the dinner table. And so you are both doing an awesome job. And Vidisha, good luck at UConn next year. Right? You're going to UConn? Yes?
Yes, I am.
All right, good.
Just wanted to say thank you to both of you, not just for being here, but for voicing your opinions, voicing your thoughts, bringing a refreshing energy to the table. I think that we can get really bogged down sometimes in numbers. And you two are a reminder of why we're here, why we signed on to do this job and why we do what we do. You make us proud, you make Newington proud, and most importantly, you are representing all of the other students your age and all the way down to the very little ones in kindergarten. You are advocating for them and you are paving the path forward for them. So I thank you for that. And again, just your, the energy that you bring to the table is admirable. And I love going places, different school events and seeing your faces, always kind of in the front. There you are. So thank you so much. And loved seeing you in the show, Jimmy. You did a great job. I know that was like two months ago, but still, still riding on that because it was so good.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Paradi.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for coming to our table and sharing your opinions, giving your updates are always fun to look forward to. But also, you know, interrupting us when we're just talking back and forth, and you guys give a student perspective, and I think that's really important. So thank you for being here this year. I know you weren't here physically, but, you know, being online and attending the meetings, it's been wonderful and nice to get to know you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And online, Jessica Weaver.
For me, the Vendetti dynasty, the legacy that you have created and continued, having your sister on was a blessing. And then you came along, and I was like two Vendetties, twice the fun, twice the joy you've brought to the board and twice the information you have brought to this board. I always think it's wonderful that, you know, one, Stuco is life for me, will forever be life for me, Student Council is the best. And we always get the best representation. Student Council is the best. And we always get the best representative, always the best representative of our school are our student council reps. So, I just want to say thank you to you both, Vidisha as well. You know, I've been a fan of you on and off the tennis court for a very long time. And I'm so excited that you're going to be a fellow Husky. And I think one of the things I love is not only what you do and present at the board meetings, because quite frankly, they are intense boards. I mean, I talk fast, but you guys really put me to shame. I mean, it's a lot. It's dense. It's packed, and we are there for it. But it's also giving your perspective like others. And I think it's so invaluable to have that. I'm so grateful to have that because, like we said, I mean, I guess, yeah, I'll call myself the adult. You know, we're a group of adults at the table now, right? But it's so important to break it down to why it matters, right? This is who is going to be impacted on the days, every single day. So, I really appreciate the perspectives you've given, the absolutely incredible reports that you have given, and frankly, what you've done to represent Newington as a community. I mean, I'll, we'll see Jimmy's, you know, feature in Newington life after Vidisha's, I'm sure. But I just want to say thank you and very good job being stupid representatives. You are the best of the best and extending example of what we think a portion of graduate really wants. So, thank you. And just good luck finishing out the year, guys. And I look forward to your report in a couple minutes.
Okay. And next up, Richard Laverrier?
Hi, Vidisha. I just want to say that I thought you did a great job representing the students with us this year. I think that the one time that I showed up to the high school that I met you, I thought you did a great job being there with the waiting in the hallway. And you introduced yourself to the governor, very strong student representative, appreciate it. And to James, I think that you did a great job on the morning news. If you thought none of us were watching, I was watching. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is Sam Sharma.
Hey, I just want to thank James and Vidisha. You know, thanks for, thank you for taking this on, it's a responsibility. And, you know, it's so inspiring what you've done. And I wish you both like the best of luck in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. And Anastasia Yop?
Hi, thank you. I just want to say thanks to James and Vidisha for all you've done. Like to Danielle's point, I know some of our meetings went really, really long and, you know, sorry. And it was, you know, a lot of work in your part, you know, congratulations and good luck, you know, going to UConn. Thank you.
All right, and thank you. And also, I want to remind those that are online, when you raise your hand after you've spoken, please put it down so that I can keep my focus. It's like a squirrel in a backyard to me. All right, any, any other board? Okay. All right, well, thank you, the two of you. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Steve Farisi for the recognition of mentors and mentees.
Thank you so much, Dr. Fletcher. I am very honored to be able to present this evening the team mentors and mentees that we have for the 21, 22 school year. It's such an honor to present our mentors to you. These are folks that really bring their expertise to life by helping our new educators here in the Newington Public Schools, whether they're fresh from college or whether there are someone coming new that we've hired from another district. So, I just wanted to share a little bit about the team program with you. Really, the program itself is to help promote excellence, equity, and high achievement of our students by engaging teachers in purposeful exploration of their professional practice and guiding support. And so, with that, they focus on five areas. It has everything to do with the classroom environment, student engagement, and commitment to learning. Their planning for students to be actively learning in classroom, the actual instruction itself, the assessment of how we tell students are learning, and then their professional responsibilities as a teacher. So, with that, they work very closely, our mentees, with our mentors, to look at all the student data, analyze and reflect on their practice, set goals, engage in new learning, and then apply that new learning and really continue in that cyclical process of doing that work over and over again so they can continue to grow and develop. I'm so excited to share that we had a large amount of mentors and mentees this year. So, we have two types of mentors and mentees, formal mentors, who take students who have just come out of college that we've hired, and they mentor them for their two years through team. We had 19 mentors working with 19 mentees this year, so about 38 formal partnerships. And then for informal mentors, and those would be folks who we hired new, coming to the Newington Public Schools from another district, there were also 19 of those folks who worked with our mentees. So, in all, we had 76 participants this year, a larger number than some typical years. So, it's a really exciting year. A little bit about the formal mentors, they're teachers who must have at least three years of successful teaching experience. They have to apply and be approved through a district-wide team coordinating committee. If their application is accepted and they are approved, then they have to go through 20 hours of training through the State Department of Education. And once they complete that training, they're allowed to be a mentor, but they have to take a refresher course to maintain their certification in being a mentor. They work very closely with our beginning teachers. They meet often with their mentee on their own time, before, during, and after school, planning times. The meetings are focused specifically on instruction and focusing on instructional issues within the classroom, but also other areas too, like, you know, this is where the copier is, this is the lead custodian and the head secretary, the two most important people in the, in this whole school, you know, those types of great things too. And they really teach and provide that on-the-job coaching and support in the area of like student management, instructional strategies, student motivation, fostering a positive learning environment, and establishing classroom routines. And that really make for a well-run classroom. So, our informal mentors do a lot of the same, but remember now they're working with staff who have come with experience already. So, they're doing more of just helping new staff get indoctrinated or enculturated with the Newington Public Schools, helping them understand kind of where things are, what's available to them, how they can support them best throughout their, their first year. Here's a list. It's rather extensive. I'll try not to read to readers. But we have a fantastic list of informal mentors and mentees. Our mentors happen to be on the left-hand side. You'll see some names in blue. Those are the folks who are on with us tonight. So, an example would be if you read it across, Emma Dietrich, she is a new staff member in our district. Her mentor is Amy Inzero, Reading Language Arts Consultant Coach at Elizabeth Green Elementary School. And the other few folks that are with us this evening, mentors, Eileen Breedice at Anna Reynolds Elementary School, Alicia Gildner, I saw her on the line at Elizabeth Green Elementary School, Brenda Zwill, instructional coach who splits two schools, Elizabeth Green and Ruth Chafee, Donna Pazinski, or Dana Pazinski, who's on the line, and she's from John Wallace, Maria Morris, who's with us, who's at Martin Kellogg, and Jennifer McGowan, who is with us at Martin Kellogg also. One of the mentees is joining us for the formal process, Sarah Martel. She's at Ruth Chafee School. And I just want to thank them wholeheartedly for everything that they've done, but all the mentors and mentees, even the ones that couldn't be with us this evening. The list goes on. So, here are more of our formal mentors that are really supporting our new educators here in the Newington Public Schools. And then we have a great list of 19 partnerships for our informal mentors. And some of the folks joining us this evening include Melissa Guida from Elizabeth Green School, art teacher, Chris Tyler, I saw her on the line from Martin Kellogg, Ken Bell from Martin Kellogg as well, and Jen Farise is on the line as well with us from Newington High School. We do have more Lauren Malicki, a mentee, and this is a great story. So, Lauren has been teaching almost 30 years here in the Newington Public Schools, decided to move to a new level and was assigned a partner informal mentor. And so, that's what we try to do, to really support people in any type of transition that they have here in the Newington Public Schools so they can meet all their objectives and goals with success for students. So, we're really proud and really honored and thankful for the time and dedication that these mentors give to our new educators here in Newington. And we just want to thank them so dearly for everything that they do, really raising the next generation of professionals in our district.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. Thank you to all of the mentors. And congratulations to the mentees for taking that big step. Any comments from board members? Go ahead.
I just am blown away as an educator that this is happening here in Newington. This is amazing. This, I think it promotes community, supportive relationships, collaboration. I'm sure it helps boost morale. And even, I love the example that you gave, Mr. Farisi, of a veteran teacher that moved to a new position, still having that support person, especially, and I know we bring this up all the time, but the past two and a half, however long it's been now, years of this pandemic have been certainly uncharted waters. To sort of have somebody in that, I'm like using out-of-figure language here, but to have somebody in that boat with you, it just, it means the world of difference, I can only assume, as I'm sure I would feel as an educator. So, I just, I think that's, this is fantastic. Thank you for all of those who served as mentors and those who were being mentored, mentees. I hope that you get the opportunity to go on and kind of pass that on to someone else. Clearly, it's just additional evidence to prove that Newington Public Schools really, truly, it's a community of learners, not just with our students, but with our staff. And I just, I think that's so commendable.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll go online. Jessica Weaver?
Okay, so this is like my Oscars list. I have a list of every single teacher I've had ever. If I ever like won an Oscar, it'd be everyone who I would thank. So, I see Miss Gildner, who I had for kindergarten way back when, two decades ago. The wonderful Mrs. Milky, Mr. Bell. There's like a million of you. And I think I remember this last year when I told Ms. Tyler, I was like, this is like the NFL squad. You have Mr. Fried, you have a whole bunch of like the A-team here. And I think that's really reflective of what this program is, is our A-team. And we have a pretty big A-team here in Newington. And I think that's just because every year, there is just so much talent that we foster and so much talent we retain. And I'm so grateful for that because the teachers that I had, all of you on this call, I'm so grateful for. And I know not only am I grateful as a student, but I know other teachers are grateful. And we've seen the fruits of your labor every year. The mentees that had talked last year, the mentees this year, I know have everything good to say. And they eventually get up to the A-team as well. And that's why we keep fostering the talent that we do in Newington and why we keep fostering the students like Vidisha and James. So, you know, I think it's really important just to recognize not only the mentors, but the mentees and the willingness of all of our teachers to continue to improve, even in the last two years where I don't know how the extreme burnout just didn't just like take over completely. So, thank you not only for the past two years, just as your role as teachers, but to continue to go above and beyond and mentor each other. We look at our board as a team and what we can help do for teachers, and our teachers are truly that team that we want to support. I think Dr. Fletcher opened up our last, our term with saying, you know, it's all about the students. But remember, it's all about the teachers. So, thank you for embodying that. And thank you for all that you do, particularly personally, but also for each other. So, thank you and congratulations.
All right, thank you. Sam Sharma?
Hey, I just want to quickly thank, I mean, this is such a wonderful program because when my, my wife started teaching, she was assigned a mentor also, and that really made the difference. I mean, it helped her transition. So, I understand the value. And, you know, it's such a wonderful program. Thank you for having me here. Appreciate it.
All right, and thank you very much. I don't see any more participation here. Oh, there we go. Danielle?
I wanted to be last. So, I just, I want to say that I saw one particular teacher on there. And mentoring is actually very difficult, and I don't think people understand that commitment. So, it's fostering community, but it is, and it's a commitment. And you want to go home at the end of the day, and the last thing you want to do is give back because you're so tired. And mentors step up and do it, and it's so important. But I do see someone on there, and that's my Mrs. Breedice. So, she, you know, I hope that you create a million little Mrs. Breedices throughout this community because our property values will go crazy because everyone in the world will want to go to school here. So, I don't often get to say a chance to throwback, but in third grade, you changed my daughter's life, and thank you.
That's wonderful. All right, seeing no more participation. And I want to thank you very much, Mr. Farisi, for sharing that with us.
Thank you. And thank all the mentors so much for showing up this evening.
All right, give them a hand. Thank you. Okay, moving on to number four. Our Newington High School freshman, Sruti Wadwa, applied for a Voice for Change grant offered through the State Department of Education for high school students. We were notified that her application was chosen for funding, and she will receive $20,000 for Newington High School to develop more outdoor learning spaces. So, I believe she's going to share at this time.
Yep, she is in the audience.
Present this.
And Ms. Tigno, did you want to say something as well?
Yeah, I did. I thought we were kind of off together, but that's okay. If she's being introduced, I just wanted to get up and introduce the Wada. Especially Sruti. She'll explain the kind of process that she went through, but I just want to make sure where, this is a freshman who out of 1,300 students in our school put forward a proposal, which I'll have her just talk about a little bit, and was awarded this grant. So, an amazing accomplishment from a freshman. We will all benefit at Newington High School from your hard work, sweetheart. So, thank you so much. If you want to come up and say a few words?
Hi, everyone. I'm Sruti. I'm a freshman at Newington High School. Today, I'm going to be talking to you about the Voice for Change program. So, last year in November, Governor Lamont and the Connecticut State Department of Education announced that there would be a program called Voice for Change that would allow high school students across Connecticut to use their voices to, basically it was empower high school students and make them part of the decision-making process. And it allowed the students to be a part on how more than $1.5 million in federal relief funds are used. So, Ms. Tigno shared information about this in early December last year. And just after seeing it, I knew that I had to participate in it. So, I did some additional research, and I brainstormed so many ideas, but I just couldn't figure out the best idea that would highly like benefit our school. So, I was like talking to my math teacher one day on a math break, and we were talking about how cool it would be and how fun it would be to be able to learn outdoors. And that's when I was like, this is it. So, we were, we were talking, and then like I did some research at home. And I found that learning outdoors isn't just so fun, but it's also so stress-relieving. This was like a really important factor to consider because the pandemic had increased stress levels for all ages. And I was also able to relate to this idea because last year at John Wallace, we were able to utilize the the outdoor tables for outdoor learning. And so, I created a proposal and submitted it after Ms. Tigno and Dr. Brummet approved it. And soon, in early March, we heard back from the CSDE team saying that our proposal had been approved. And we were all really excited. And we soon had a voting date in which we managed to get just under 500 votes. And recently, on April 8th, Ms. Tigno, Dr. Brummet, and myself watched live as the winners were announced. And we're all really excited to say that we have won, we have been awarded $20,000 to get outdoor tables for Newington High School. I just want to thank Ms. Tigno for her support, and just thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, you're very welcome. Go ahead, Ms. Droste.
Wow, you are an amazing young lady. Are you mom and dad? Give yourself a pat back because I know you have something to do with that too. The fact that you just came up here and spoke to us so eloquently without reading something, you have an amazing future and holy moly. And thank you to all the, you know, from, like, that's awesome. Because I do know as a teacher, it's awesome to be outside and be able to teach. So, congratulations. That's, you are amazing. You're just, wow.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm at a loss for words. I'm going to say, yeah, wow, in ditto. Absolutely amazing that so many students heard about this, but you heard about it and ran with it and did research. Um, absolutely amazing that so many students heard about this, but you heard about it and ran with it and did research and that, that's, that's just, that's amazing. You are going to go places. Uh, I, I can't believe you are only a freshman. That just blows my mind. Um, and additionally, just want to reiterate, you are an amazing public speaker, very captivating, very well spoken. Um, congratulations. You should feel so proud of yourself and just keep going, keep doing what you're doing. There's so much more for you to unlock. So thank you. We all thank you.
Alright. Dr. Brummet.
Yes, I just want to mention that last evening I was with Mr. Klett at the Teacher of the Year Celebration in the Bushnell, and I let him know you were going to be honored tonight. And he reminded me that you were Speaker at Convocation this year, part of his Teacher of the Year speech. And a direct quote was, he knew that you were going to do amazing things in high school. So when I told him about tonight, he was tickled and, but not surprised. And thank you to Ms. Tigno for her working with you on that. And, and I know we're going to have some grateful students once everything comes to life with your purchases. So thank you to mom and dad too for being, uh, such a supportive family.
Thank you. Okay, um, online we have Richard Laverrier.
Yes, thank you. Um, so young people are the only way we're going to make change. Keep doing what you're doing. Very impressive as a freshman. Uh, twenty thousand dollars is never anything to sneeze at and, uh, you're doing, you're doing great things. Keep it up and, uh, I'm proud of you. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Jessica Weaver.
Okay, we need you. You can just take my seat right there. You can see it. You can just take it now because that's, that's where we're at. Um, incredible, incredible. Oh my gosh. I, I think we'll all just say like, this is incredible. Not only you just speaking now about it, um, but your age, the amount of work and effort and the actionable steps that has been taken. I mean, it's very clear. Um, we could have used you in the budget process this year frankly. So please just know your, your seats, we'll have a seat there for you anytime I see a future, uh, student board member at the very least there. Um, but congratulations. Thank you so much, um, for what you do. And I know, just make sure you tell everybody that it was you that did that because a lot of kids are going to be thanking you for that, not only this year, but next year and years to come. Uh, I'm very jealous because I would love, I would have loved some outdoor seating as well. Um, so just truly incredible. And, um, if you find twenty thousand dollars in another grant anywhere, you know, happy to have you as a consultant as our, as our board here because your future and your present is so bright.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, our student rep, Vidisha Thacker.
Um, I know all the adults are really impressed by Shrasti, but I'm, I'm even more shocked because I cannot think back to four years ago and imagine being in that room, speaking so eloquently and winning the school a twenty thousand dollar grant to do something that all the students are going to appreciate. And I know I'm leaving and I'm not going to get to use the outdoor space, but I know that all the students are going to appreciate it. And I just want to say that all of us are really thankful for what you did. And I'm also very happy that even though I'm leaving, that you're there to you're, you're girl bossing it. You've got this.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Uh, next up, student rep Jimmy Vendetti.
As a student council officer, to get kids to do anything, never mind freshmen, to get kids period, to like cut out snowflakes. It is a very painful process that requires a lot of direct pressure. I think that's the best word to use, pressure. But the fact that like this happened and this happened and I just thank you, thank you. We need people like you. Just, just keep being you. Just I'm done, don't worry.
Thank you very much. Okay, board member Sam Sharma.
Hey, I just want to quickly thank, I mean, actually congratulate you and, uh, you know, this is so inspiring. Thank you for you know, winning this grant and I hope you can, uh, come back and share with us like, you know, any, any update. So thanks a lot again. And this is so inspiring.
Alright, thank you. Very good. And thank you once again and congratulations. It's a great job done. Okay, at this time, we're going to move on to Agenda Item C, which is public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Um, you can speak online. If you are here in person, you're welcome to come to the table. You can call in at eight six zero, six six five, eight six five nine. And we do limit civil participation to three minutes. And we thank you for honoring that. And I need to pull up my participants. Vidisha and Jimmy, if you don't mind, just, uh, take your hands down. Alright, I don't see anybody online yet. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to participate? Any questions? Or comments related to board responsibilities? Well, seeing none, which is a rarity here. We're going to move on now to Agenda Item D. That is our Standing Committee Information Items. And, uh, looks like first is Student Policy Committee. That's you. You're up, Ms. Rose.
So, um, we met two weeks ago and we've had some good heated debates. Me and Jess Weaver and I are on a on a mission. Um, so we are currently working on, um, the dress code. And we are also working, I, I am not going to lie, I totally forgot that I need to report on this. So Mr. Freezy, feel free to jump in or Jess. Um, what was the other policy we were working on? Oh, yes, we had a conversation about
grading and classroom.
Grading. Um, so we are waiting for more information on that. So that's about and we talked about leveling, just changing just some wording on, um, leveling and placement that we agreed on, that, that we were agreed on. So um, we, we will report back when we have final. We really never finalized much. We're still, we're still getting more information. So.
Now, Ms. Weaver, did you have more information?
Oh, the discussion was not between, we are full in agreement on, on some of our grading policies, um, to be college friendly. Um, and I would say our next meeting, we will, we haven't do it, you know, gone fully into dress code yet. So that will be next meeting, May eighteenth at five thirty.
Virtual. It is virtual. It has to be. Alright, so anybody that has questions about the policy, uh, they will be meeting again next Wednesday, beginning at five thirty, which is a virtual meeting. And I'm sure that that's all available online.
I just want to emphasize what Jess said, that that's going to be, especially for my high school friends over there. That's on the dress code and there is chance for public participation. Um, I'm pretty lenient liberal on it, but um, so if you have anything you want to add, please look for that and join us and let us know.
And also you have a website, correct, or a page?
We, we do have a policy committee website. It's, um, it's right off of our Newington Public Schools website. It's located in a few areas. It's under the Board of Education. It's under, um, Human Resources. It's under the Superintendent. Um, so hopefully you can find it there. Um, and you'll be able to see all past meeting agendas and all past meeting minutes.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much. I was very impressed when that came out. Very happy with that. Next, we're going to have a report from the Curriculum Committee. If the Chair of the Committee.
Alright, good evening. Um, we actually met tonight, so this is super fresh for us. Um, so this evening, we talked about textbook adoption. So we went over, um, what that process looks like. Um, and we also talked about the three textbooks that we will be adopting. Um, one is for our social issues in sports class. One is for sociology and one is for our teacher. Um, preparedness. I think it's called So You Want to Teach. If You Love It, Teach It, a class that I would love, love to be in or teach or whatever. Um, and two of those classes are, um, are UConn classes. Therefore, um, the syllabus is written by them and the books are requirement of the, of that institution. Um, so those books are required. Um, so those three books are passed along, um, for, um, adoption. We also looked at, um, moving down here. We also looked at, um, the financial literacy, personal finance, which is definitely, um, an exciting road forward here. Um, we currently have two classes running that have some overlap. Um, but they are two different classes in, in the, the business, um, under the business umbrella. Um, in two thousand fifteen, there was a requirement that schools in Connecticut are required to offer such classes. Um, I hope I'm getting this right, Ms. Weaver. I know you're okay, good. Yeah, she's nodding. Good. Um, that, um, are requiring it to be, that do require it to be offered. We um, are offering these classes and we, our current seniors, fifty-four percent of them have taken at least one of these financial classes, which is fantastic. So, um, we do, we are bringing the this topic up to the Plans Proposal Committee, um, because it does involve adding additional staff and resources. Um, and that team has actually met three times since our last curriculum meeting. So within the last month and, and moving things forward. And, um, we will continue as we move into the fall, um, to decide where we want this course to go and, and what we want it to, to look like. Um, there's a lot of hard work ahead, but it's all really good things. I think I got it all.
Alright, very good. Looks like we have a couple of questions online. Uh, Richard Laverrier.
Yes, uh, thank you very much, um, Ms. Wagner. I appreciate everything that you've done um, as the Chair of this, uh, committee. I think that one thing we need, that we need to think about is that, um, state mandates are not great and we can do it better than the state. The Department of Education just came out with a recommendation that we include this as part of our curriculum. Okay? And this is for every, every town in the state, not just us. Uh, I think that we can, I think we can do it better. And I think that we can do it sooner. And I think the state should copy us, not us copying the state. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And Jessica Weaver.
Yeah, and just want to say, so it's been in legislation since two thousand fifteen. Um, I, I shared with our curriculum committee my op ed, but there's legislation since two thousand fifteen detailing this. I just want to give a shout out to not only Ms. Wagner, but the, um, Kristen Freeman, Wendy Kraus, but also the three business teachers we have on staff already who have met three, like she said, three times already to, to look at this, um, who already have those credentials and who have already been doing great work, not only in the classroom, but outside with the huge, I, I guess I'll ask this for not point of order, but um, our huge growth in DECA, FBLA and those other, um, kind of supplementary clubs. So I'm looking forward to that, um, and, and the timeline of, of over the next year designing that plans curriculum. Um, I think we are well suited to have our, our three business, uh, teachers already in that and with our, our curriculum staff on there. So just want to say thank you for contributing that, um, going into our next curriculum meeting. Not sure when that will be, but thank you.
Alright, thank you. Any more questions for the Curriculum Committee? Okay, well, thank you for that report. Thank you for all the work that you are doing. And now we are going to move on to our student representatives for their report. Uh, Jimmy and Vidisha, we're going to turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Um, so first up tonight, we have the Music and Arts Department. Um, so the two big upcoming dates are actually, um, the first one is tomorrow, uh, May twelfth. At seventeen, uh, seven fifteen PM is our Newington High School Band Concert. Um, it's the big one. It'll, it'll be in the NHS Auditorium. Um, and now I'll let Vidisha, Vidisha talk more about the fundraiser, but Triumph is putting on a, a little music fundraiser to go along with that. Now, I'll let Vidisha go into detail with that. Um, later on this month, on, uh, May twenty fourth is the Newington High School Choral Concert, um, where Chamber and Corral will be performing. Um, in the auditorium as well. That will be at seven o'clock. Um, speaking of the NHS Chamber Choir, um, the Chamber Choir has been performing the National Anthem for all like senior nights. So shout out to those guys. Um, and they've also been asked to perform at the chorus concerts at both, um, John Wallace Middle School and Martin Kellogg Middle School. Um, as far as what songs they'll be performing, that's to be determined depending on Mr. Clark. Um, Ch- Chamber has also been, started sending volunteers to go visit and sing with the middle schoolers. Um, because one of the massive issues that we've, um, but ever since the pandemic started, um, the music department has lost a lot of people, especially in the choir department. Um, so Mr. Clark and the other choral teachers from Martin Kellogg and John Wallace have been trying to get the high schoolers to come down, um, work with the middle schoolers and say like, stick with it, stick with it through high school because although it may not be fun at the middle school level anymore, like you might not have any friends, that's, it's going to get better. It'll, it like the, being a part of this is just such a fun experience that you want to do it. Um, so that's the goal behind that little initiative. Um, uh, as far as past information, the NHS Orchestra Concert was yesterday evening, uh, it was May ninth. No, that wasn't May ninth. That was May tenth. Wait. Yeah, May tenth, um, where our musicians performed absolutely beautifully. And if you missed that concert, then that's absolutely fine because shout out to broadcasting. It was livestreamed, um, on, on, um, the, uh, new, uh, the NHS YouTube channel, Newington High School. Um, as far as the sports, uh, sports go, um, another reminder about broadcasting, all major sporting events or all major home sporting events, I should say, are being livestreamed on YouTube by the NHS Broadcasting Club on the NHS, uh, NHS YouTube channel, Newington High School. Um, as far as outdoor track goes, unfortunately, uh, well, fortunately on uh, May tenth, which was last night, was our senior night and it went wonderfully. Um, but unfortunately Buckley, the team that uh, we were supposed to be running against, couldn't provide transportation for its kids. Um, so we had a little inner squad meet, uh, but it was wonderful. The seniors had a wonderful time. Pictures got taken. Every, thank, and shout out to the NHS, or the NHS Outdoor Track Booster Program because they, they do amazing things. Um, as far as today goes, um, this evening was the Unified Sports Meet, uh, at the, um, the NHS track. Um, and many of our, many of the, um, the track team members did help out with it, especially the senior team. So thank you guys. Um, as far as tennis goes, the tennis ball drop fundraiser will take place on May twenty fifth at five thirty PM. With the help of the Newington Fire Department, the tennis ball, what balls will be dropped from eighty feet in the air onto a target on tennis courts and, and the numbered ball that is closest will win a gift basket with at least three hundred and fifty dollars. Donations will be split between the Special Olympics charity chosen by a player on the team and the Booster Club. Senior night, uh, will be on May, uh, the, May twentieth against Weatherfield. And they, they are currently second in their class. Good for tennis. Um, boys tennis is qualified for the state tournament. Shout out to those guys. And their senior night will be on May sixteenth against Rocky Hill. Uh, lacrosse had their senior night on May ninth against Weatherfield, where they unfortunately lost. Um, and girls lacrosse will be having their game against Weatherfield on May eleventh, just tonight at Clem Lamere, Lamere Recreation Complex at six PM. In fact, actually by now the game is probably over. Um, softball will be having their next game on tonight, also at Clem Lamere at seven fifteen, which is currently on, which is currently happening. Uh, baseball, they're current, although, so an issue with like, uh, uh, athletics this year is that not many teams have been having the greatest success. Uh, track has only won one meet. Um, boys lacrosse has not been doing too hot, but there are two silver linings, uh, and those silver linings are, uh, NHS baseball and boys volleyball. The boys, the boys baseball team currently has an eleven to two record and their senior night is May sixteenth against New Britain. Um, the boys volleyball team has a ten four record. They are having a car wash fundraiser on May twenty first. And their senior night is on May twenty first. Beautiful. Um, as far as upcoming events go, uh, we have junior prom, which was last Friday on May sixth. Um, at Junior, at Glastonbury Hills Country Club. Um, and this week, May ninth through the thirteenth has been Mental Health Awareness Week. Um, so for, and this is just about, um, the men, uh, Stop the Stigma has been doing a thing to help awareness about mental health and the crisis involved, um, with mental health. Um, they, and which might just shout to stop the stigma. Um, well, for, for example, like Friday was Mellow Monday where you wear comfy clothes and pajamas and like, it, it's to encourage, um, like a relaxing environment among the school or within the school. Um, Treat Yourself Tuesday was on Tuesday, May tenth, uh, which you, where you could buy a lollipop bundle or inspirational decals. Um, all three for one dollar, um, to support the club and support the causes which the club supports. Um, May eleventh, which was today, you could wear green to wear, raise awareness for mental health. May eleventh, which was today, you could wear green to where raise awareness for mental health and watch NHS. Yes?
Just want to let you know the the club is going to present tonight, so you don't need to give as much detail.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. I was not made aware of that, but. Thank you, Stop the Stigma. Uh, in that case, I'm going to stop it there so that they have stuff to talk about. Um, but before Vadisha goes, I just want to make one final note. Um, AP testing. Is currently well going into a close. This is the last week. It started last week to this week. Um, but. If you still have AP testing and you're on this meeting tonight. Good luck. Vadisha, do you?
Uh, just to continue some upcoming events, so Friday is senior prom at Quasi. Uh, May seventeenth will be the A M and P M awards. Uh, the P M awards being the scholarship night award. Letters have been mailed out already. Uh, May eighteenth will be our. Wacky Wednesday, uh, where you wear your favorite floral for the springtime. On May twentieth, we will be having International Culture Day, where you wear something that honors your culture. International Culture Day is actually on the twenty-first, but because it falls on the weekend, we're doing it that Friday. Uh. May twentieth is also the physics and engineering classes trip to Six Flags, so they'll be spending the day there. May twenty-fifth is the Scholars Breakfast. May twenty-sixth is the Athletic Scholarship Night, and June second will be our senior outing at Brownstone, and. Tickets are currently on, we're on sale all week and will be on sale tomorrow as well. Some graduation updates. The class essay contest has ended. Submissions were due Monday, and. Faculty will review the submissions to choose a finalist and will work with them to edit their speech before graduation. Today, uh. Ms. Tiggo and the other house principals had a. Meeting with all the seniors during homeroom to go over graduation and prom information. And lastly, for graduation updates, students are able to get a form. And a piece of card stock to submit their cap design proposals to be approved prior to graduation. For clubs, Student Council, we are currently um in the process of electing new us, and we are. We have had meetings to share with the underclassmen who are eligible, their responsibilities, and how they can run. We plan to have. Speeches and voting uh next week, hopefully. Uh, DECA is currently having our. Step-up sale for the eighth graders who will be attending Newington High School. Uh, we have a lot of bundled deals, and we have extended this to go out till Friday. Uh, as Jimmy mentioned already, broadcasting is doing an amazing job covering all the events, making it easy for people who can't attend to still. View remotely. Um, there's a new club, the Comfort Zone, so this, the purpose of this club is for students to have a place to relax. Talk and really just to promote mental health awareness, and they will be meeting every Wednesday till June first. There's also uh grief groups being held by Mrs. Dowsh and Mrs. Robles. Um, where students who are affected by a family member's death or illness. Or are looking for any other kind of support with individuals in their similar situations, they can go to these meetings. And then lastly, for um academics. National Honor Society, all individual service project and hours required for stole are due by the end of them. By the May meeting, which will be on May nineteenth. For English Honor Society, those new members that have been. Accepted into the chapter have been notified, and their virtual induction ceremony will be. May twenty-third after school. Uh, the Science National Society, we also inducted new members last week and. Uh, the, but with the current officers and the science department. And the last meeting with senior members and the newly inducted members will be tomorrow. And then for Triumph, uh, members of the chapter have been volunteering at several musical events, uh, the concerts. Both at the middle and high school levels, and one of the biggest things that they're doing that Jimmy was mentioning early is the Hungry for Music fundraiser. Where in you can donate new or used instruments uh to Hungry for Music, a charity organization that supports music education both. In the U S and internationally by uh donating. Instruments to underprivileged children, and they're holding these collection drives at both. They had. One yesterday at the orchestra concert. There will be another collection drive um tomorrow at the band concert, and then on the twenty-fourth at the uh. Chorus concert. And that is all I have for tonight.
You guys are on mute again, if you could just unmute the Helen Nelson Conference Room.
Yeah, Bruce, we can't hear you.
I can't see anything either.
We can see Beth. That's it.
No, they're on.
Hi, Beth.
There she is.
Yeah, just the Helen Nelson Conference Room is. The key. Yeah, I think they're working on it. Yep.
Well, great update.
All good.
All right, we're back.
Yay. I was just saying, for anyone who's at home or even here, if you want to donate, um, Sophie Wood also has a. Google form where you can fill out what instrument and you, they will go pick it up from your house. So.
Oh.
Um, just, I'm not quite sure where that form is. Maybe Mrs. Tiggo knows, but um, that that does exist somewhere.
All right. Wonderful. Hey, uh, Ms. Weaver?
I just want to say, is this your your last report? Because it's getting down there. And so I just wanted, I thought so. I just wanted to say thank you again. I know I.
Last one?
Okay, there is nothing else I I could say. Bruce, can you hear me or no?
Vadisha.
I can hear you, Jessie.
I know you can, but can they? Okay, thank you. Bye. Um, I just want to say thank you to you guys. It's been an absolute ride. Um, you guys are really awesome. Like I said, best of the best and truly a great talent. Like I said, I could talk forever, but you guys really put me to shame. Truly jam-packed. It always is so informative, and I think we literally just never have any questions because you like are truly there. Um, so thank you all for your contribution to the board. Please know that it is really valued, and we appreciate the joy you bring and also the information. Um, and really kicked it out of the park for for the last one, and I will give a shout out to. Vadisha and these tennis, girls tennis team, Mr. Sean Hussey as the as the coach there. This is going to be a pretty cool thing with the ball drop, so I'm pretty excited. Girls tennis doesn't always get the love it needs, but they're on a pretty good winning streak, so uh definitely donate and participate in that. So um. I I I'm very excited for this, uh, and very excited to see how you guys finish out your year. Uh, because I know you guys will be at all those award ceremonies as well. Uh, so thank you again. Take care.
So by the way, tennis is not a sport you want to get a lot of love in.
Oh, Dr. Fletcher, research you up. Did I set you up for that?
All right, uh, I don't see any other questions. Want to thank the two of you once again for your participation. The information that you've shared tonight. I'm going to move on now to our second item under our new business. We're going to turn this over now to the Newington High School uh program for their highlights.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Tiggo to introduce her students and their respective discussions.
Thank you, Dr. Ramet. Good evening. So my students know this, and Vadisha and Jimmy know this as well. When I introduce myself at any event, I say I'm the proud principal of Newington High School. There's many reasons for that, which you've heard, you know, as you're. Sitting at board members and if you've been to anything at Newington High School. We have so many programs, educationally, athletically, clubs. And so to highlight just a couple tonight, I've invited um our M L students and Mr. Myler, who are going to do a presentation about their learning. Um, we are so happy that you're here tonight. I know they're very nervous. I know I'm nervous, and I do this all the time. So incredible, incredible uh strength that you have to be here this evening. And then right after them, the Stop the Stigma Club, as Jimmy started to talk about, glad we caught you in a breath there, Jimmy. Um, but under the direction of Mrs. Redman, we will hear from the Stop the Stigma Club. It's fitting because it's Mental Health Awareness Month. And so we can hear all about what they've planned for us. I feel like.
No opposition from public.
Uh, Ms., yeah, Mr. Wood, your mic keeps getting turned on. Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Myler.
Thank you, Ms. Tiggo. Thank you for having us here at the uh, at the board meeting. I brought some students with me, and they've had a long day, so we're thank, we're grateful to be able to go on right now. We've been up at schools since seven thirty this morning. Uh, my name is Tom Myler. I'm the M L teacher at the high school. We use the term M L now as opposed to E L, multilingual learners as opposed to English learners, because these students come to us. Speaking more than one language. They're learning English, but some sort of speaking three or four languages. So we want to honor that ability, that they come to us with an awful lot. Before I turn it over to them for them to share, I want to share some facts that are coming up. So I'm glad I'm here because I couldn't see it from back there. I took a picture of my phone so I could look at it. So the E L or M L student population as a total percentage of total school population is the fastest growing segment across the country. So back in two thousand ten, nine point two percent of the students were identified as M L. In two thousand eighteen, it was ten point two, and it's about the same right now. There's nothing new for U S. In Connecticut, we grew from five point two percent to seven point six percent to right now. Eight point eight percent. In Newington, we were four point three percent in two thousand fifteen. That was the closest I could find to get to two thousand ten. We were five point eight in two thousand eighteen, and just recently, just had the numbers done, we're eight point one percent. So eight point one percent of all the students in Newington are identified as multilingual learners. Those are the ones identified. There's other students that have exited. That still speak. There were the families that speak at home a different language, but the kids are proficient in English, so we have a very diverse community. What I found very interesting in a meeting I just attended with the state. Was in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-six hundred more students took Last Links. Than they did in two thousand twenty. Last Links is a test that we take to exit or to to measure a student's English proficiency. That's twenty-six hundred kids in two years across the state of Connecticut. A thousand of those students were in middle school in grade six through eight. That's a huge percentage. Those kids that are coming in are typically. Coming from other countries. They weren't born here, and they're learning English. So they have a huge task ahead of them. They have to learn English as well as the concepts of all their content classes. As they exit middle school into high school. That's a tall order. Imagine learning biology when you're learning English, or U S history when you're learning English. And we know that it takes five to seven years for a student to become proficient in English. So these students will be using our assistance their whole time that they're in Newington. And lucky, we have a lot of good things happening in Newington, which the kids will now share. We're very impressed now that we have a S- an E L teacher in every single one of our schools. Thank you very much, and that's helped us tremendously. But now I want to turn it over to some of the students. They could talk about what we can do. I'm looking at all them. Who wants to go first? Alyssia?
Hello. Um, my name is Celestia. I am M L student. I came to America in two thousand sixteen. And I started living in Newington in two thousand nineteen. Um, I really like to thank you all for all of the. Opportunities this school has. Um. Right now, in the M L class, we've been working on a project that really is not like only fun. But it also helps us to learn how to um get better at reading, writing, and talking. And it also will help me right now with my junior um. Uh, college essay, because we've been writing essay for this project. And I would like to thank you all for all the opportunities we have, like. This class and orchestra and taking a lot of languages like. Of French, Latin, uh, Spanish, because in another school that I've been, we didn't have all of those languages to learn. Thank you all.
Bye, babe. Cheers.
Hi, my name is Marifé Gómez. I am from Venezuela. I speak Spanish and I'm learning English. I arrived in the U S a year ago. When I arrived at Newington High School in August, I remember being scared and nervous about the language. Everything was new to me, like the people, the town, and the school. Then I went to Mr. Rallye class, and I met all the people who are like me. Uh, they are learning English, and I felt welcome. Uh, I'm learning so much, and I worked so hard in all my classes. That's why I was chosen to be the outstanding student of the month. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sol. Um, I'm a sophomore at Newington High School. I born in Colombia, but I was raised in Brazil. I speak Spanish and Portuguese, and I'm learning English and French. Um, I came to the U S nine months ago. And yeah, I'm going to talk about how M L students learn English through projects. Our class, I is doing a project about fish. We went to Mystic Aquarium to learn and see things that we can talk about. Um, we are getting an aquarium, actually. I'm so excited about that. Um, we wanted to see like. How like, what aquariums look like, so yeah. Um, I think it's great like to learn and. To learn about marine biology outside of school. Because we can like see and and hear the animals, and I love animals, by the way. Um, my favorite part was being able like to talk and. And write about this experience, because we learn English about writing, speaking. And uh, I know that we all appreciate the the things or the opportunities that. The school offers to us to learn English, so thank you so much.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ernesto Pedrosa, and I came from Mexico. I know this is like a. Serious meeting, but I have a question for all of you that I would like you to answer. It's kind of weird, but. Please raise your hand if you put ketchup on your pizza. No one? All right, okay, uh. Okay, that was kind of weird, but I can't explain why I asked that. There's someone in the meeting, raise your hand? Why? Okay, uh.
Jimmy definitely did.
Oh, okay, that, okay. I like them. So, uh, I asked this because. I've noticed, I asked like over a hundred and ten people in New England High School if they put ketchup on their pizza. Ninety of them said no, and. I noticed that in America, they're not used to putting ketchup on their pizza, and I can't explain why I'm asking this. It's because in Mexico and other parts of. Um. Well, Hispanic people uh are used to put ketchup on their pizza, and that explains the micro differences between different cultures. Okay, moving forward. Uh, I came from Mexico in two thousand nineteen, July, and without barely knowing any English. I went to John Wallace Middle School for half the quarter, and then for your half, I sat on remote learning. And for the almost uh, the first semester of eighth grade. Which was very hard for me because it was hard for me to socialize and. Learn the language and how to speak it, because I was indoors, so I couldn't like really speak English. I would just speak Spanish with my family. And uh, for the other half of the quarter, I mean, for your half of the semester, yeah, um. I got the help I needed from Ms. Allen, who's also an M L teacher. And she even helped me with to get my grades up with an art teacher named Miss Kay. Uh, I don't know how to pronounce her last name. And uh. Yeah, I even got student of the month, which was really pretty impressive, because. When I first got here, I was filling almost all my classes. I was feeling. Yeah, I was pretty much filling all my classes through seven year, I mean, through through um seventh grade and first half of eighth grade. But now I'm in Newington High School, and I got really happy to see that I got in a class full of. Uh, most students, which not only spoke the same language as me, but experienced the same stuff as me. Stuff as maybe. Feeling the the. The feeling of being looked down, but teachers or students feel like they couldn't, they like. Teacher or student thinking that. We couldn't do something just because we didn't speak English, or maybe. They thought we were dumb or not as smart as them just because we couldn't speak English. But in reality, we're just as smart as them since we can speak one or more languages. And I'm currently learning Spanish, English, and Italian, which is eh. Italian is not my my thing, but yeah, it's it's impressive because people that don't. But yeah, it's, it's impressive, cause people don't need to speak English in order to be, um, uh, good in life. You, you don't need to speak English in order to be successful in life, you know? And I like being, um, an M L student, cause I don't only learn about students and their cultures, I only learn about, well, I can also learn about their cultures, religions, food they like, everything that might look like a little thing, but it's also a great thing for you to learn. And it's, it's awesome for you to learn about students' cultures. And you can have a different point of view of different, of, of different things that you thought you will never experience. And yeah, I'm very grateful for Mr. Myler and Ms. Allen for everything they've done for us. They helped us in history. They helped us with every single class. And I'm very grateful and I hope we can still be this team.
Uh, hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Matthew. Uh, I was born in here, but I was raised in Brazil. I speak Portuguese and Spanish. Uh, kind of nervous. Wait, uh. When I first got, uh, I can't, no.
When you first got here, you want to look at your phone?
Yeah.
We've been practicing. I know Matthew's got some things he wants to share.
Yeah. So when I first came into the high school, it was confusing for me to understand the school and the way that they teaching you was. Uh, uh, but I'm glad that I had a lot of people that helped me. Uh, in Mr. Myler's class, we learn about, uh, we learn how to read, write, listen and talk to other people. And uh, I also like the opportunity that we have in New England High School that we can take a lot of, can take a bunch of different classes, like my favorite class, culinary. Uh, it was an amazing experience for me and now I'm thinking about to go to culinary school and be a chef and have my own restaurant. Thank you so much.
Hello, I, I know I need to be fast. I'll try my best. Uh, my name is Ahmed. Uh, I'm from Turkey. I'm a sophomore in New York High School. I speak Turkish. I'm learning English, French and my friends. I, I'm learning French and my friends teaching me some Spanish. Uh, I came to U S about two years ago in twenty twenty. After I stayed in New York for a week, I came to Newington. When I came to here, uh, it was the middle of the school year. And I went to the school for a week or two and the quarantine just started and I was, I was removed for over a year. And last year, uh, I felt like I was a stranger because I was new in the school. Uh, I didn't have any friendships. I had nothing. And every day I was hoping to go back to Turkey every night. But this year I have more friends and it's getting better every day. I have a lot of friends compared to last year. Um, and all my friends in here speaks different languages. For example, I speak Turkish. My best friend Marco speaks Spanish. And we have a lot of friends that speak different languages. The thing is we all speak English, fam. We speak each other. Uh, and I also want to say that, uh, thank you so much, Mr. Myler, for helping us about everything. You are our hero. Uh, anyways, I'd like to be in the United States. Thank you all.
I just really want to thank them because for them to come up and speak in front of a crowd of people like this is really amazing. They've been in the country for some two, three years and two of those years were through a pandemic. So from going from school to remote to back and forth and doing all this and the fact that they rely and count on each other. So our classroom is, is a place of safety. So people are, they have to use English to communicate. So we set up, we set up tasks purposefully to get them to speak. So by being friends and the Spanish he's learning is not the Spanish I would be teaching. But they really do help each other. We help each other. Um, we say we use our resources to get by. And if I can have someone explain a math problem to somebody else who speaks Vietnamese, who's helping someone speak Spanish, it's really an amazing thing. So I feel I'm very fortunate to be working with this group of children of this across the whole district. It's really an amazing opportunity for me as well. So we want to thank you for all the opportunities you provide us and all the services that we have to provide for these guys. Thank you very much.
I know it's no shock that I have tears in my eyes. So proud of you all. Thank you so much. That's truly ama, I know everyone's shocked. Um, now we have Stop the Stigma Club. So, um, Ms. Redmond, do you want to come up and your? Yeah, Emma, Anthony and Patience? Alright. You're gonna continue to be amazed, so. Thank you, Ms. Tigno. Uh, well, before I start about Stop the Stigma, um, I'm Ms. Redmond and I am a language teacher. I'm a Spanish teacher and just wow, I'm just blown away, um, by the multilingual students. Ustedes son muy valientes. Muchas gracias por compartir todo. I know not everyone is Spanish speaking, but I just have to say that. I, um, kind of got the chills when you were up here and so great job. So. Okay, so, um, I just, I'll give you a little bit of background of Stop the Stigma and then I would um, love to go through, highlight a couple of things that particularly this week's activities, but I am with Patience Tez, who's a sophomore. Anthony Forbes, uh, who is a senior and Emma Walker, who's also a senior. Okay, um, Stop the Stigma. This is a student created club three years ago and I'm a little shaky because the reason, um, it was created is uh, in December twenty eighteen, my brother and I, uh, started a, uh, we wrote a lesson together um, on substance abuse, um, and prevention. Because he suffered with addiction and, uh, he passed in, uh, April twenty nineteen. Um, I had had students that year for back to back years and, um, you know, I was very open with it with the whole school. And a lot of students came to me and when he passed, they said, we have to do something. We have to, like, this is all around us. Uh, that's what came out of our, our lesson that we had done and we brought in guest speakers uh, that year. And so the club was created, um, by those students. Um, Anthony has been a part of that since the beginning. And since then, we've done, we've done a lot. Uh, and despite going through a pandemic for two years, we've accomplished so much. Um, we now, after that, uh, substance abuse and pr- uh, prevention program, we brought in Chris Heron and other guest, guest speakers, which were very impactful and powerful to our school community. Uh, the feedback was, was great. Uh, so many people, you know, just had come up to me or Ms. Tigno and, you know, just said, wow. Um, and so throughout the past couple of years, we have worked, we've collaborated with student council. We did a suicide prevention program a couple of years ago before the pandemic. Uh, we, let's see, what else? We, we brought in more guest speakers, um, to address mental health needs. And we have had our, we've maintained the club on a monthly basis. Uh, we've addressed anything from anxiety to coping skills. I mean, we have done some heavy topics, um, even online last year. Uh, we kept it coming. This year our focus has been on mental health. Um, the needs, the mental health needs, obviously we're all aware. Um, students need us and we need each other and we are trying to stop those stigmas. That's the name of our club, Stop the Stigma, Start the Conversation. And we believe that the only way to, to do that is to start talking about it and um, I'm just so happy that I can be a support for students and that they feel safe with me and we can, um, do some of this important and meaningful work. So I'm going to pass it over to Emma. She's going to do a little intro and then we're just going to walk you through this week's activities, which are just one of the many things that we've accomplished this year. Great.
Oh, can I say one more thing?
Yeah, I, I didn't want to, so I'm so sorry. Um, I, I, I would be remiss if I didn't thank, um, Ms. Tigno and the administrators, because every single time we have come to them with, you know, can, can we do this? Can we make this work? Um, Ms. Tigno makes it work. Um, schedule changes. Uh, the amount of hours and time that just go into doing even something like this, what you're about to see, uh, just requires a lot of behind the scenes, uh, work, but Ms. Tigno has always been supportive and encouraging of students, um, voices, of our voices and doing anything she can to support, uh, our needs. And so I just want to say thank you, Tara, Laura. And, um, it's, we couldn't do this without their support. So, sorry, Emma.
Hi, everyone. My name is Emma Walker. Um, I'm part of the Stop the Stigma Club, of course. Um, I am currently doing a Girl Scout boulderboard project and I joined mainly because of that, but I've seen this club throughout the years. I've always wanted to join, but never got the chance, but this year is perfect. This year, uh, I saw the potential. I saw the drive and I was like, I have to be a part of this. Um, so this week is Mental Health Awareness Week and of course, Mental Health Awareness Month. Today happens to be Mental Health Awareness Day, which is perfect while we're here. Um, so yeah, um, we have worked throughout our school during open studies, even at home. Um, our goal for this project is basically to make people feel more human. We need people to look at each other. We need people to see each other. Um, I feel like men, or I think all of us feel like mental health is just so important and so such a big problem in our society today. Um, we need to normalize getting help. We need to normalize everything about mental health. Um, yeah, we want people to be educated on the subject and we want to shine light on both what mental health is and what mental health isn't. So here's a quick rundown of our week this week. So yeah, we'll start off with Anthony.
Hello, my name is Anthony Forbes and for Monday, we, our theme for that day was Mellow Monday, which is where students and like faculty, they can dress up in like pajamas or like comfy clothing and it's supposed to like represent, like taking a step back into your, like your comfort zone. You know, if you're like just feeling stressed or whatever, you know, just take a step back inside comfort zone. Now gain yourself back in the peace of mind. You know, who doesn't want to be in pajamas all day? I am. Also on Tuesday is Treat Yourself Tuesday. And it is going on throughout the course of the week where we'll be selling certain lollipops and stickers. And just like, you know, like, plus to promote like treating, treating yourself between other people and showing the act of kindness around, so.
Patience, would you mind holding? So I'll just walk you quickly through the, uh, activities we actually did today. Um, a big part of our activity, which we did in the substance abuse prevention, uh, three years ago, were student and staff, uh, speaking. And that has always been hearing people's stories or just talking about the matter has always been the most uh, meaningful connection that we've done. And so the feedback from that is kind of what we went through to do this week. We did keep it light. Obviously the, you know, content is could be heavy, but we kept it to three questions. And I know you don't have the videos here. I, I wish we could show them to you, but they're like fifteen minutes long each, so we're not going to do that tonight, but um, today, the, the students and the staff watched, um, so we had about twenty participants, um, staff and students, uh, answer the question, what does mental health mean to you? And we showed that today in advisory. Um, and we also, the club traced one hundred of these. They were blank. Uh, so you just had the ribbon and we distributed it to every advisory teacher. We also explained it to the school. Um, in each advisory, this is just an example, but a student would write a different message in the advisory. This was just mine that I had done prior to the meeting, but you'll see if you walked into the, the rooms, there's different handwriting and then, you know, there are positive affirmations that are inside of the ribbon. Um, and green is obviously, um, the, the color for mental health awareness, which we all wore green today. Um, uh, so those were the two activities we did today and Patience is going to take us through Thursday. Oh, I'm sorry. Anthony, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so for Thursday, it, it's going to be Thoughtful Thursday. So just keep, keep your health, keep your mental health in mind. And with Thoughtful Thursday, we're doing, going to be doing a homeroom activity across all the homerooms. So which includes writing anonymous positive affirmations on cards and struggling them and hanging out to students. And along with that, we're going to be showing the second part of the video with tackles the question, what are some, some stigmas behind mental health? And this just brings, you know, normally regarding like stigmas, we're, we're not really like open with them. Most of the time we tend to like, yeah, we said, we had like certain like stigmas we keep, keep on and we all normally bring it up. So mo- most of the time people pass these, pass these only talk about like the coping. But I feel like, we feel like it's important of how these stigmas come to play and how they affect those within mental illness.
Okay, so this Friday is Free to Be Me Friday at Newington High School. And we're asking everyone to wear something that represents them. So that could be something that goes with your personality, something you're interested in, something that represents your culture. And we're also selling lollipops and stickers and lunch waves as well. And we're doing this in order to create a safe space for others, so that we make sure that everybody feels welcome at our school. And then in homeroom again, we're going to be, um, showing a video, but this one's going to be covering the question, what are some coping strategies to help with different forms of mental illness? And this, um, is kind of a good close to the week to leave people with some useful resources in their hands. And the whole week is just really important because mental health is the social and emotional wellbeing of yourself and if you don't focus on it and if you don't learn about it and how it impacts you, you don't know how to cope with it. And if we kind of figure out our coping skills, it can just help everybody in the future.
Alright, and to close out our week, uh, we decided, or I came up with the idea to make a survey. Um, basically it's a feeling survey. We didn't quite want to go into diagnoses with mental illness, of course. So we wanted to get an idea of how people truly feel in Newington High School. We want to be able to see how the stigma impacts us. And what, I don't want to say what we can do about it, but yeah, we're going to do as much as we can for other people. Um, it's about a brief survey, um, just to get an idea of how people feel, whether it's feelings of anxiety, whether it's you're tired, whether it's you're just nervous, whatever you feel. Um, we want to welcome people to be open. We want to welcome people to be honest. Um, we want to make a welcome environment in Newington High School. Um, so the survey is anonymous. Um, we're sharing it with the entire school. And for my Girl Scout project, I'm creating a website and I wanted to display statistics in Newington High School and we want to kind of just get that out there. We want to address the stigma. We want to, we want it to impact people. We want them to say, wow, this is happening and we need to do something about it. Um, so yeah, um, let me see if there's anything else I missed. Um, yeah, so I hope you guys can really see the power of our club and what we've been doing. Um, thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone, for, um, your time and for inviting us and Ms. Tigno for, uh, including us. There's actually about fifty students in the club. Um, these are some, these are our leaders, along with a couple others who couldn't be here for senior night for sports and some things, but, um, we've done awesome work and the students are absolutely amazing and we've got some natural born leaders at Newington High School and I couldn't be more proud.
Thank you very much to our presenters this evening, both our M L students and our Stop the Stigma students. Much appreciated. You've, you've done your teacher and school proud. Dr. Fletcher.
Oh, they're on their way out the door.
They're eager to go home.
Ms. Tiggo, you can relay all the positive comments that are about to come their way.
All right, board member comments. We'll open it up for that now. Ms. Hup Wagner.
I'm trying to form more, the, um, sorry. I was definitely tearing up when, when those students spoke. That was so incredibly moving and the learning experience that they're having here in the United States and specifically at Newington High School is absolutely beautiful. That is education at its finest. And it just, it humbled me and it made me, um, so proud to sit at this table and to, to be in this town. I really feel like those students' lives have changed because of educators, um, in Newington Public Schools. And, um, the way that they all spoke, the stories that they told, uh, it, it was just, it was incredibly moving. And really I just, I want to use the word beautiful to describe the whole thing. Um, and the Stop the Stigma Club, um, gosh, I applaud that. That's, that's, that's huge. That's come leaping bounds. So awesome.
Ms. Strohst?
I'm going to start with the Stop the Stigma Club because you guys are still here. Right? So I just want to say like, it is huge that we've come so far. You know, I can remember learning about SEL and it was like, yeah, right? But now that kids understand the importance of it and the fact that you guys are leaders and you're not, it's important. It's, it's important to talk about. So, um, it's not an easy topic to talk about.
So, uh, just the level of investment, the building improvements itself.
So just thank you. Thank you for, you know, sharing your stories and being here and making a difference. And as far as the ML kids, Mrs. Tiggo, please, I, I wanted to share the story with the boy who came up here. And he made a comment, one of them made a comment about like teachers thinking that, you know, maybe they can't do it. Cause and, and it hits home because as an educator, we are trained in, in making students not feel like that. And, um, I think the, the word of the day, Jessica Weaver in it, hold on. The word of the day is wow. Um, like just wow, the fact that they can speak that, that fluently already is huge. And I have a student who speaks Spanish and I've learned a lot of Spanish to try and teach him and, and he respects that. But I respect those kids because they're, it's a lot harder for them, right? I can sit there with my Google Translate and help a kid through math, but, um, just wow to all of them. Please, please, please share that, that teachers really do want them to do well and they're doing awesome.
All right. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Ms. Prati.
Um, so first Stop the Stigma Club, I think that it's fantastic that there's so many kids involved in the club. And, you know, all the great things that you're doing to raise awareness and stop the stigma, you know? It's very important, mental health, um, substance abuse, everything is just very important, especially at this age, you know, to, to get it out and make sure that, you know, kids aren't going down the wrong path or if they have, you know, mental health issues that they don't feel ashamed of it. Or, you know, it's not something to be ashamed of. You just, you know, get, use coping mechanisms and, and learn about how to manage it. Um, so I think it's wonderful that there's, you know, so many students involved in it and then you're doing everything for the school. Um, and then with the ML students, I thought that, you know, every single one of them was super brave to come here, um, to, to the meeting, but also, you know, coming to school, it's a brand new environment, but it's great that they have that community in the classroom and then they can use what they're learning, um, in the ML class to, you know, learn all their other subjects. And I think, you know, the, just the whole program is amazing and, and the students, you can tell that they definitely feel, um, safe and welcomed and, and able to learn and explore. And it's a fantastic thing. My, my father came to the United States and he was in, he was in second grade, didn't speak any English and nothing like this existed way back then, you know? So he kind of just had to struggle through and, you know, didn't have any friends or had friends that didn't understand what he was going through. So I think it's fantastic that they have this opportunity and they're doing so well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we'll go online to Jessica Weaver.
All right. Well, Jessica Weaver best, but Tiggo, you are like, are you trying to make us all emotional here? Oh my gosh, I don't have enough tears here. Um, I saw. Oh my gosh, is anyone else crying here? Um, just like so much, like we said, wow, beauty, amazingness. I think it's just a reflection. I like, I think Dr. Roman, if you put the schedule together, I mean, seriously, hey team, this is just too much. This is so much overwhelming of amazingness. Um, I just want to say and echo the sentiments. I think it's really beautiful and testament to what Newington has grown to, particularly those statistics from Mr. Myler, of how much even in the past three years, we've grown, um, in terms of our ML population. And, you know, I think I spent a lot of time partnering with a lot of people from Europe with my job. And it's just very normal. It's a very Western lens to think, you know, only speak one language. And I think it's a very, you know, global lens to think that, you know, you speak multiple languages. And I think it's a really big strength. So, um, kudos to every single kid that just came up and spoke their story. Um, I think it was incredibly beautiful, but also incredibly impactful, not just for us listening here, but, um, to those who will view it, view it later, because I think you really represent the heart of what Newington is about. And to, um, my mental health peeps, um, I really appreciate what you're doing. May is such an important month. It's not the only month to recognize mental health, but I really hope this, um, spotlighted it, you know, going to NHS a couple of years ago. Um, I could have really used a lot of that and to see the progress that has already been made in that short time is so helpful. You know, like, wish I had the coping skills when I had my first panic attack, like knowing those things and knowing people and seeing your classmates, knowing that it's so normal to have these types of feelings. And I think particularly with the pandemic onset, so many of the anxieties we already had. So, um, just incredible work that you're doing and the leadership that you're showing to be open, be honest, and create a safe space for kids to be able to talk about those things because they are not easy topics. And, um, I think Ms. Redman for, for doing that as well, um, to share her story and the personal effects it has. Because, um, I think everyone knows someone or is someone with, um, touched by any, um, mental health disorders or opioid abuse or substance abuse or, um, it's just, it's ingrained now in our, in our, in our society. And I think it's really important, um, that this be a topic, not only brought forth by our teachers, but embodied by our students. So thank you for showing your leadership. Thank you for doing it, not just this week, but I know what you do all year round. So thank you for being a great example for Newington High, um, and, and for the community at large. So congratulations and thanks so much for showing up tonight.
All right. Thank you. And Michael Brenda?
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. Um, yeah, I mean echoing what Jessica just said, obviously. But, um, Ms. Redman, I think it's truly just awe inspiring that you took a life experience that nobody ever wants to experience and you turned it into a way to help so many kids that, that probably needed the help. And, and like to Jessica's point, you know, this didn't exist when, when she was there. Um, but I think the way that you've helped students understand that it's okay to talk about difficult topics such as mental health, um, and that's okay to ask for help. I think that that's really important. And it's just truly, you know, it's something that I'm sure that you're very proud of. But this district, this Board of Ed, I'm sure in this town is very proud that, that you, you create that, that program and help give those kids, um, a chance to, to really have their voice heard and to talk things through. To the students who presented and are part of the club, um, you're changing people's lives around you. You know, sometimes you may not know it, uh, and I think it's important to remember that everything that you're doing in this club has potential to save someone's life. And it, it may not be a student at Newington High School. It may be a college student of one of your peers that they're going to meet in three years. It could be a student's family member or even many years down the road. It could be their own kids, you know, learning how to have these conversations and, and to help people through it. And to, you know, essentially what the club says, stop the, the, stop the stigma. So thank you all for all your work and for taking this challenge and, and for helping, um, so many people in your school and people that you'll probably never meet. In response to the first presentation, uh, Mr. Myler presented several years ago to the board and, and I was lucky enough to be there and I appreciate all the work that, that he's doing for those students and, and all of his peers at the various levels in the district, uh, that are doing the same thing. And it's all the hard work that the students are putting into the journey at Newington High School that, um, you know, they're, they're trying to live out that American dream. And so many of them kind of alluded to how much they just love being here and love being a part of, of our country and our school system and our town. I think that the ML group just really embodies that. Um, and I, I really think, quite frankly, they embody the, the Newington High School motto of being a family of learners. And I think you kind of saw it a little bit when that one student had a tough time last phone, you know, Ms. Tiggo obviously being there right away and Mr. Myler helping them through it. Um, it's just clear that everyone involved in the program, both the students and the educators, they have one another's back. Um, they support one another and, and help them tackle the challenges that coming to this country as an ML student bring. Um, so in my mind, the, the program itself just represents what's great about our country as a whole and great about our town and great about our district. So thank you to everybody involved.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, next, Jimmy Vendetti.
Hi, just a small message to Stop the Stigma. I think they're still there. Um, on, on behalf of student council and on behalf of my other student council officers who are behind me in spirit, um, if you ever need anything, our door is always open. Um, I, we, we, we can, uh, if you need help with publicizing, if you need help. I know there's a lot of chaos and confusion that's around as well in answers, but if you need something to get out there, we will, we will 100% help you put it out there. Um, we, we are always here to help. And if, like I said, our door is always open, except for when, you know, Bryce and Brenda are yelling. But you can wait till after that. Um, someone found that funny. Um, as far as the ML students go, Newington has always been my happy place, Newington High School specifically. Um, and it makes me so incredibly happy to know that there are, um, that these students who come from different backgrounds, um, who come from different countries are experiencing that same joy and are able to experience that same joy because of the ML program. I just want to say thank you to the instructors involved and thank you to the students too, who are working so hard.
Thank you very much, Jimmy. Uh, Sam Sharma?
Hey, I just want to quickly thank, um, actually everyone who's involved with the, the stigma club. I mean, I know how it is. I've, uh, lost two friends, you know, uh, and because of addiction. So I know how it is. And, uh, you know, thank you for doing that and, you know, giving the students a safe space where they can talk about this stuff. And as far as the ML club, um, thank you for such a wonderful thing. And especially like students who've just come to the States, making them feel they're welcome. Because, you know, our school district is open and, you know, we welcome, we welcome these students. And, you know, thank you for supporting them. So inspiring. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And, uh, Richard Laverrier?
Yes, thank you. Uh, just wanted to say to the, uh, Stop the Stigma Club, um, sorry that it's a mostly empty room tonight. I wish I could have been there, um, due to COVID and spiking numbers. It didn't make sense, but I wish I was there for you. When you get to the working world, there's a stigma and you're gonna face it. That's, you know, it is what it is. It, it's okay, but it's not okay. You guys are the generation that's going to save the world. And when it comes to suicide prevention, uh, it's not about sharing a phone number. It's about saying hello. It's about being a friend. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. I don't see any more participation. So I want to say once again, thank you all for the great presentations that you brought tonight, uh, keeping us up to date. We're going to follow you and see how you're doing. Whatever we can do to help you, you got to let us know. All right. Thank you once again. Okay. So the next thing up is going to be our update on the Anna Reynolds Building Project. Uh, Mr. Steve Wood, he was online with us. Hopefully he's still with us.
I am.
All right. It's all yours.
Okay. Let me just get back to my chair. Obviously, um, you're aware that we've run into a little bit of a snag. We, uh, bids came in, nifty over budget. Ooh, I just dropped my phone. Um, bids came in over budget. And, uh, so the team has been working over the last three weeks to do some value management and get us back on track. Uh, good news is that we believe we are there. Um, we had to put four packages back out to bid and added a package because some things changed. So site is back out, um, electrical, flooring, and acoustical tile. And then the new one is panels. So the building will be all panelized. There's metal panels. That actually is also, um, back up to bid. Those bids are back in on the 18th. If those numbers come in where we think they will be, uh, we will be on budget. Actually, we're going to be a little bit below our budget, somewhere hopefully around $250,000 to $300,000. Then the project will move forward, um, to you for approval as well as the town council. And hopefully we will be about two weeks late in starting this summer, um, as far as construction process goes, but it looks good. And I want to say, uh, on behalf of, of the committee, Lou Jack Mo is, along with Dr. Brummett, have been phenomenal, working day and night, uh, with this team to get the project back on budget. Um, I don't think this is anybody's fault. Um, I've been in this business for over 50 years. We hit the street with our bids exact time that you wanted to, except nobody could have predicted this war and it came with it. Um, again, they were all familiar with gasoline prices and diesel doesn't get talked about very much. But the diesel just weeks ago was somewhere around 350, 375. It's now 650. Um, and there isn't anything that will be delivered to that school that doesn't have diesel involved. So it, it's just unfortunate. I mean, prices are just skyrocketing. Um, good news is once we get a contractor on board and we sign contracts, there's, they're frozen into their prices. So there is no escalation. So I, I think we're going to be okay. Um, but I won't know that for sure until May 18th. That's when the, the last bids come in. And with that, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I guess I want to second the thanks to Lou and Dr. Brummett for all the hard work on, um, it's the value engineering that they did or they helped the team with. Um, it probably was not an easy job and there's definitely a lot that had to be gone through. Um, Steve, I was just wondering, you said that the project potentially is going to be two weeks behind schedule for start of construction. I think originally we were hoping to start right, like the day after school gets out. Is that, um, is that what you're talking about?
Yes. Yep. So it, it will take a little bit of time. Once these bids come in, again, the council, there'll be several things going on. Uh, the council will be finalizing it and allowing, uh, the town manager to sign the contracts so that we can accept all these bids. Um, and then the contractor is doing additional scope reviews, getting out contracts to all of those. Uh, cause remember we have 24, 25 subcontractors that make up this project. So, uh, Tom Demar, tomorrow from, uh, Newfield is very comfortable, uh, with what we have. He thinks that everything is still will work and, uh, we will get the project back on schedule, but we will start off a little bit behind.
Thank you. And then, um, do you have any indication that, you know, if the bids do come back unfavorable or are you just worried at all that the project is in jeopardy or you think that things are going to?
I'm a, I'm a, I'm a very optimistic guy. So, um, my cup is always, yeah, is only, is always half full or overflowing. Um, again, I think we've done a really good job of the value. And I guess the important thing here too is that, you know, I talk, we talk about value management, value engineering. This building has not changed very much. So some of the things that were going inside of it have changed, but the dimensions of the school stay the same. Um, the addition of the elevator is still also being put in. So it's really just the finishes that we're talking about here. Um, unfortunately, the, you know, the playground in the courtyard, um, that will be sacrificed. in the courtyard, that will be sacrificed right now. But that was a stretch from the beginning. I think everybody on the committee knew that. And with this extreme escalation in pricing, that had to go. I think everybody, when they walk into the building, will still, will have that wow factor. I think it's important to realize that. And yeah, again, I'm real optimistic. I'm thinking that we're gonna, usually the second time bids do well. So the shock is gone. We know what we're looking for. We've done some value management as well as softened some of the ads that we had, and we should be okay.
And then I'm not sure if you mentioned, but we heard last committee meeting that the state did approve the space waiver. So I know that was a concern of a lot of people, but we got that. So there's the full expected amount was coming back.
Correct. We will get our full reimbursement because the school is larger than the state would allow if we were building a new one, which amounts to about $750,000. That would have put us, put us over our threshold and what we can spend. So that's great news. And also I got an email today too, that we have a couple of single source items. The state has approved all those. So everything between building committee and our owners, project manager, as well as a construction manager and the state's Office of School Construction Grants, is everything is on track. Everything is moving exactly as it should.
Okay, and thank you. And next, Jessica Weaver.
Thanks for hanging on. Sorry about that. And appreciate all your work. Just a quick question about locking in the bids. Does that have like a, an adjustable, like say diesel prices go down or we, you know, get another Fed hike and you see a little bit of inflation get a little a little better? Is that locked in with it? Or are we locking in it like, you know, the diesel prices right now, you know, whatever? Just in terms of that inflation adjustment?
Yeah. So we are, when we sign the contract, the contract typically is the bid amount unless we negotiate up or down by taking scope out or adding scope in. And that's, that's the amount that is set for the entire contract. There is no escalation clause, clauses for school construction. Even wages, like I can guarantee you wages will go up every year because they do. This is a prevailing wage job. We will not pay any increase in wages. The contractors have already anticipated that that increase in their hourly rates moving forward.
All right. I guess my question, yeah, is like, so no escalation, but no kind of de-escalation either. It's just, is what it is right now.
Correct. It goes the other way. It goes the other way also.
All right. Thanks so much.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. And I don't see any other questions related to this. So Mr. Woods, thank you very much for coming in tonight and giving us this update.
Okay, thank you. Have a great night, everybody.
All right. Okay, next up, we are going to get an update on the ESS program, the Newington High School Intervention Program redesign. Dr. Brummett?
Yes, we have just two more brief updates. Marlena Gugliosa from our special ed department will just give a brief overview of the role of ESS. I know the board has been very interested about our services to children who have a variety of challenges. And certainly you heard about that tonight with ML and Stop the Stigma. And then Ms. Tigno was just going to briefly talk about some redesign at the high school relative to, well, I'll let her speak to it when it's her turn. So Ms. Gugliosa first and then Ms. Tigno. So all yours, Marlena.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. And due to the late hour, I will not give you the whole background. I had a nice sort of like presentation setup, but I'm going to hold off on that because I think I'm going to hopefully see you guys again in September when we will meet for, with the ESS team. ESS is Effective School Solutions. They do a wonderful job of putting together something called a report card. And what they do is they're able to tell us about the successes and challenges that they've had, but we get to hear from students. We get to hear from families anonymously about how being part of ESS has really impacted their lives. So basically, in a nutshell, Effective School Solutions is a company that is out of New Jersey that I kind of stumbled upon through some action research that I was doing really early on in our, in my career when I started with Newington back in 2016. And we contracted with them in 2018. And we began with two clinicians at the high school. So currently we have two clinicians at the high school and one clinician at John Wallace and one clinician at Martin Kellogg. But focusing in on Newington High School, there there's a select number of students who are referred to ESS. And there was a referral process and a community outreach to the parent to make sure that the parents are on board with accepting this support. And what it is, is an extra layer of support, especially in the area of mental health. Students who are, can be very, very bright in tier one, not students who are, you know, students with disabilities, so to speak, with an IEP or through a 504. But those, but these services are available to students who are on a 504 or on an IEP. So it is just that extra layer of support in the area of mental health. And there, the two clinicians that we have on board at the high school have been incredible. I don't know how we would have gotten some of our students to the finish line and graduated if it hadn't been for the support that they had received in addition to our own social work counselors. So it is really a team effort and it has been a tremendous success at the high school.
Thank you, Marlena. And as you mentioned, you'll be back in the fall with our annual report card where you'll discuss specific data, number of kids served and outcomes and things that the board has seen before. But I do appreciate you hanging in there with us tonight. And more updates to come in September. And now I'd like to invite Ms. Tigno up. She can certainly take the microphone at the end of the table or come back up where she was earlier. And she just, I had asked her to address the board on some tweaks we're making to the high school to really look at serving all of our kids to the best of our abilities. So it's a redesign of some programs that we offer to our children who might need a little extra support at Newington High. Take it away, Ms. Tigno.
All right. Can I just say something before I get into this? I just, I want, I appreciate the time that the Board of Ed puts in. You know, I know you do this all the time, but to be part of this tonight and the attention that you gave to my students and our staff is just incredible. It's a long night. But I, I thank you all for that because it was huge for them to be here. And it was clear that you respected them and wanted to hear from them. So thank you for that. Even though I did tell them 15 minutes total, they were, you know, very excited to talk about themselves and their program. So, so thank you for that. This will be very brief. So we are just reorganizing some of our resources in addition to a lot of the things that we already offer at the high school. You know, Marlena talked about supports. We have the PSYAP program, which our ML students are working with our regular ed teachers and Mr. Myler. We have co-teaching classes. We have ML classes, our freshman team. So next year, we are no longer going to offer our alternate classes, but we are going to add two 10th grade teams. And this is to reach more students. We've just found that the need is much greater. And so we're just reorganizing our resources and next year we are going to be offering two 10th grade teams. The ninth grade teams, there are some students who find success and are able to kind of fly on their own. And then there are students who weren't necessarily recommended for the program that we've identified that are still need support. So as you hear about all the concerns that are going on, mental health wise or for whatever reasons, because of COVID, that may have set some students back. We really are hoping that adding the two 10th grade teams next year provide additional support for our students. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tigno. And I'll turn it back to Dr. Fletcher to manage any questions.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay. You did such a good job explaining it that nobody has any questions. Thank you once again. I'm looking forward to more updates on that to see how that program is going. Okay, so now we're going to move on to item agenda E4, which is a discussion and possible action on the use of school building fees. Dr. Brummett?
Thank you. I'll start. And then if anyone has particular questions, Mr. Jakomowitz is obviously ready to jump in. So we analyzed our current building fee structure. They have not been modified, I believe, at least three to four years or five years. Quite a long time. We intentionally did not do anything differently during COVID. But what's happening now is we do believe with the escalation of cost and labor costs and other things, we are recommending to the board a 2% increase next year to meet the demands of, you know, we're back basically to increase building usage. So I think we, to make up for some lost ground and the fact that costs are going up, there's just no way around that. I think it's important for us to entertain the notion of, excuse me, a cost of a 2% increase. Lou, anything you want to add?
Nothing specific other than with this recommendation of 2%, I'm really looking at next year's to be kind of the reconciliation with whatever the true outcome is of this run up on escalation of costs. I don't feel really comfortable trying to charge that kind of as the costs are climbing, you know, month by month now, but rather kind of look back at it retrospectively to really look at what the true adjustment is over the last couple of years. So we need five or 6% because, you know, we had runaway inflation this year. You know, I would rather do that after the fact than before the fact. That's really the only major decision point. Salaries are locked in because of the union contract, but all the other supporting costs with utilities and just the support services for use of the facility are the ones that are vulnerable to the big increases.
All right, very good. Do we have any questions from board members? Seeing none, I will entertain the motion. Somebody wants to read it? Go ahead, Ms. Groves.
Move the Board of Education increase the building use fees by 2% for the 2022, 2023 school year effective July 1st, 2022.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. It's open for discussion by board members. Mr. Sharma?
Guys, got a quick question for Lou. So why, why the 2%? Why not? You know, less than 2%, why not more than 2%? Because, you know, inflation is like 8.3% right now. So just the, just the logic behind that. And also like, how much, how much do we get in building use fees? I mean, last year, how much did we get?
Okay, the first question as far as the cost drivers, you have a union contract increase for the custodial union, which will increase the wage cost two and a half percent for rentals after July 1st. The, all the other items related to costs that are considered for developing the rate are utilities, toilet, bathroom services as far as the cleaning, the toilet, paper supplies, the paper towels, the heat in the building for allowing events to run whenever they're scheduled. So two and a half percent, or excuse me, 2% is a reasonable number on covering our labor costs for going into next year. And then realistically, I'll know much better how things actually turn out on all the other supplemental costs next year. So we have a two and a half percent increase built into next year's labor contract. And we've experienced a 12% increase in utility costs and cost of supplies. I may be putting a request in front of the board for five to six percent at that time, based on, you know, the blended average of these factors that are here. Okay, so that was one question. Now the second question, amount of receipts. When things were busy pre-pandemic, we were 125,000, 150,000 a year in building rentals. Last few years have been very little. It's been next program and maybe just a few selected events that went on during the year, but things are ramping back up. You know, the dance studios are coming back around, trying to reschedule their performances and events. And I'm not sure we'll, we won't get to that equivalent level for the 21, 22 year, but I'm, you know, you know, depending on what happens with the pandemic restrictions, you know, if it's all systems go, I think we'll be pretty close to where we were before.
So is 2% enough? I mean, in your judgment, is that enough or?
Well, it's enough to cover the labor cost component of it because you're not just paying for labor, you are paying for the privilege of using the building and the other costs that are involved. As far as being fair to the community, that's really one of the other considerations. It's been a hardship on everybody the last few years. And in trying to just express the sensitivity of the community's capability of paying is we'll really look to reconcile this year out where we're not overcharging, we're not guessing as far as what the rates are. We can speak to factual impact items for what's hit the board budget that we have to pass on to others.
So are we in line with other school districts or are we underpriced or overpriced?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't monitor how other communities price their access to the facilities. Ours is through board policy, where certain groups have preferential rate structures that are involved, for instance. And in Newington organizations that, you know, such as one of the political parties or the fire department wants to use one of our schools for a meeting, or they're going to conduct practice or drill, those are always for free. Park and rec programs are labor cost only plus taxes get charged through. And then we have a nonprofit rate schedule for, you know, true nonprofit organizations and then a for-profit rate schedule for businesses that want to use our facilities, such as the dance studios. So, you know, in trying to, you know, the equity of the rate structures compared to each other is really more important, you know, how another community views their use of school facilities. I can't speak to how those evolve town by town over the years. All I can really speak to is what we're doing here.
Right. My only concern is like inflation is about 8.3% right now. And I don't know, I mean, it's going to be at least like two years before we bring it down to about 2% or 2.5%. That was my concern. But, you know, if you feel 2% is fine, then it's fine. Thanks.
Yeah, well, you're locked in on the labor, labor rates are already pre-negotiated. So I'm not concerned at this point of, you know, you have a unknown as far as what your contract settlement will be. We'll be okay there. And that's, you know, a substantial portion of the overall fee to any user group for this board facilities.
Okay, thanks, Lou.
All right. And thank you. And we have a hand up from Jessica Weaver.
To answer my question, I just wanted to make sure we were balancing. Just couldn't recall how long we paused the fees for. In order to, you know, we want to obviously be fair to the community and our taxpayers, say, you know, we want to be open and have accessible facilities. But if this is covering labor costs, I can definitely see that. I think it's hard on everyone. So I don't want to say, oh, let's, you know, up it on, on our taxpayers and do it. But I guess if, I'm trying to think about how this, I guess by way of my actual question here, how much and where this goes in the budget in terms of, this is for the 2022, 2023 school year. How much we can rely on in terms of we don't really have an exact way of predicting post pandemic, still in a pandemic, use of building fees. So I guess like how much and where in that budget it can be relied on is my question.
Okay, any receipts we get for building use go into the board CIP account. So for what we're looking at for next year's rate structure, any receipts received during '22, '23 go to the board CIP account. Then the aggregate results of the year are part of the reappropriation that's done when you will then make your budget for '23, '24, which will be spring of next year, when you start looking at it and seeing, you know, with the trends of how many building rentals there are, how many dollars you have to work with in the board CIP account. The expenditures absorbed by the board is part of this year's operating budget. And there's a provision for that in the community services program to address most of those expenditures that, you know, come along.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Richard Laverrier?
Yes, I would encourage everyone to vote yes on this. I do think that in light of what's been presented, presented, this is necessary. Thank you.
All right, and thank you. And I don't see any more hands, so I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Michael Branda.
Yes.
Danielle Drow.
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Yes.
Beth Mankin-Hutbagnier.
Yes.
Richard Laverrier.
Yes.
Amy Parati.
Yes.
Sam Sharma.
Yes.
Jessica Weaver.
Yes.
Anastasia Yeh.
Yes.
Josh and Pashan unanimous, please.
Excellent. Okay, next discussion and possible action is on a meeting cancellation, item number E5.
Here we go.
Well, I'll read it real quick here if you want. So the Board of Education has a regularly scheduled meeting for Wednesday, June the 1st, 2022. Presently, there is no business scheduled for the Wednesday, June 1st, 2022 meeting. Therefore, this regular meeting can be canceled. Okay, so I'll entertain the motion.
I got it. Move the Board of Education cancel the regular meeting scheduled for Wednesday, June 1st, 2022. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? Shouldn't be, but I have to offer the opportunity. All right, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Michael Branda.
Yes.
Danielle Drow. Yes. Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Yes.
Beth Mankin-Hutbagnier.
Yes.
Richard Laverrier.
Yes.
Amy Parati.
Yes.
Sam Sharma.
Yes.
Jessica Weaver.
Yes.
Anastasia Yeh.
Yes.
Josh and Pashan unanimous, please.
Excellent. Thank you all very much. Okay, and then we have one last item. I gotta keep track of my stuff here. So this is E6, Discussion on Possible Action on the Budget for 2022-2023. Dr. Brummett?
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. In this memo that we did send out a revision to a few days ago, it is data that we did review at a previous board meeting. In short, the board recommended a 3.63% increase. The town manager recommended 1.69%. Thanks to some solid work between the board leadership and the mayor, we were able to get a restoration of $592,113 for a 2.46% increase. There was an MOU that was signed, that was officially signed May 3rd, and that will, the agreement is that the board will turn over $476,600 before the end of this fiscal year. And that agreement allowed us to get that 2.46%. What the board is looking at this evening is, where does that remaining shortfall come from? And as previously discussed, we believe we will have the resources within our non-lapsing fund to backfill those line items in the amount of $894,732, which is closing that 1.17% increase. As, as everyone is in agreement, we sent a very tight budget to the town, so any further cuts we knew would be challenging. But through all of these negotiations, that is the recommendation. And I know board members have asked, where does that money go? Lou will be essentially shaving off 20% from each of the main salary line items and backfilling it with money from the non-lapsing fund. So that is for the board's consideration this evening. And I'll turn it back over to Dr. Fletcher for any questions.
All right, thank you. Ms. Rose?
So first, I want to say I'm concerned at the late hour that we're starting this conversation. So I just want to throw that out there. But I can't, I have, I have, see, because after that talk, I got no more brain. My concern with the motion that's in front of us is there's nothing about administrative salaries. And I know that we're like backfilling, but even still, what this says to me as a teacher is that your administration is more important than teachers, even though we're not cutting teachers, it's still like out there, like, next year, if we don't get the money, this is where it's going to come from. And that worries me a little. And second, I know we're getting more money from the state with the new legislation, so would we really need to shave off $894,732, or does that need to be re-looked at and reallocated based on the new legislation?
Sounds a lot. I'm sorry.
Do you want to respond?
Sure. So we, we did, at, you know, after this budget process had already come and gone, we did get word last week that the open choice legislation did go through. So I believe that's what Ms. Rose is referring to. The board had already made a determination that we would backfill and replace or not eliminate the library science teacher. So that is now being, has been posted and is in the process of being filled. And that will eat up a good chunk of that money. The additional money, I believe we calculated at about $270,000, $2,000 per open choice child times about 140 anticipated open choice children next year. So we, right now, do not have the additional $100,000 spoken for. So it could be very well that we do not need to use the $894,000. I would like to ask, Lou, we chose the biggest ticket items with regard to the salary lines chosen. I don't know if you want to elaborate on why you chose those?
You got it? Yep, I got it.
Okay, all right.
Or Mr. Frazee?
One slight difference from what Dr. Brummett mentioned earlier, it's not that we are taking money from the non-lapsing fund and using it in the board budget. It works the other way. We take expenses from the board operating budget, charge it to the non-lapsing fund, which is offline. So the net expenses that you have in the budget are suppressed. So it'll leave you in a position where you're underfunded going forward. So it's just, you know, so you understand the differential, it's not like that money is being added to our appropriation. The appropriation is set what the town council established. So with those parameters in place, if you can even kind of follow the ebbs and flows this year, and when we built the budget one year ago, or 14 months ago, to, and we knew we needed to rely on the non-lapsing fund, and our initial estimate was we needed $2 million of that. As things have been unfolding, with the persistent inability for us to fill positions around the district, that need to use every last dollar of that $2 million has been diminishing throughout the whole year. You know, since we had a pool of $3,128,000 to start, we had $2 million allocated for this year. The preliminary number for next year was $1,128,000. This recommended motion adds another $894,000 to what will be used of non-lapsing funds next year, which is somewhere around $2,025,000. So that backs me out, since I only have $3.1 million. And I know I've got to allocate $2,025,000 next year. I'm already capped at what I can take out of the NLF, or charge expenses to the NLF this year of around $1,001,000. So we've come down from $2 million to a cap of around $1.1 million right now. And hopefully, we can beat that number as we finish out the year. You know, anything that we can save of, where I do not have to charge out maximum to the non-lapsing fund, is resources that'll stay in the non-lapsing fund for the future. So our preliminary design is, we'll be at zero June 30th, 2023. But if we're capable of re-engineering on the fly, to be able to find opportunities to, you know, keep these resources available for ourselves for dealing with other issues down the road, that would be one of the strategies we might, you know, employ. Certainly, we have to temper that with, you know, legitimate student needs as far as teaching staff, dealing with, you know, real today issues that are there, and those will always take precedent. But if you can think of the non-lapsing fund as your piggy bank, there's only so much money in the piggy bank at $3,128,000. With the very tight positions we're in for this year's budget, as well as next year's, I don't have a high degree of confidence that we're going to be able to achieve those 1% savings levels to add more money to the non-lapsing. Maybe I'll be able to cut back and not take everything I was planning on taking. But it would not be realistic to think that we would be able to just, okay, we've got $780,000 that we're going to put into the non-lapsing fund this June 30th, and we'll do that again next year, so we'll be fine. You know, we real, realistically, I have to advise the board and Dr. Brummett that we should really think that we'll be at a zero position June a year from now. And whatever we can scrape together for savings will not be, you know, huge compared to what we've had in there before. 90% or more of it will, in all likelihood, be gone. So it just, it positions you for next year's budget deliberations, because we have a little bit over $2 million a gap in our budget from '22, '23 going to '23, '24. So that'll be the starting point of any discussions that go on for being able to make sure your staff is insulated. And, you know, then we have to address all the cost escalation issues on top of that.
Ms. Rose?
So I, I did reach out to Dr. Brummett, and we never connected. That was my fault, not yours. My life is crazy right now. So I have a couple of concerns. You just like rambled off a bunch of numbers. I tried to write down what I could. So you said we were going to get $270,000 more from the state. And after we hired a library media specialist, we had $100,000 left over. So I, I find it hard to believe that a library media specialist is $170,000. I know it's more than just their salary, because we got to pay for their insurance and things like that. Seems a little high. That's my first concern. My second concern is, I sat through every board meeting, every budget meeting. I've carried this book back and forth with me every meeting to build my muscles. And at no point did I clearly hear that, out of the original budget, before we even transmitted it, that we were planning on taking $2.25 million out of the non-lapsing fund to, to make the budget. Like, so we, we got these budget numbers, and it said because of this, it was going to be even higher, because we had to backfill this. And we keep using words like backfill and piggy bank. So at this point, it's late, and I know we need to make like decisions and stuff, but like, I still have no clue, like, where we're at with the budget. So like, when I look at this $894,000, like, I mean, we got to do what we got to do. But like, I, I don't know if I'm alone, and maybe someone could help me. Like, I didn't realize in this budget book that this included taking the plans of $2.25 million out of the non-lapsing.
It didn't. That was last year's budget that you were not involved in.
Right. But I literally wrote down that Lou just said $2.25 million next year, 2022, 2023, which would leave us with no money. So like, these numbers need to come ahead of time, because he's spewing off numbers. I'm trying to write them down and process at 9:32, I mean, the time it is at night. It's, it's really hard. I'm frustrated. So the happiness ends at 9:00 for me. Sorry.
I know in Dr. Brummett's budget presentation, the initial reliance number on the non-lapsing fund for next year was $1,128,000.
Correct. And it was in several presentations. The $2 million goes, that's for next year's budget.
This year, of which, with how the year is unfolding, we're not going to need all of it. So we were able to make recommendations to best use that to achieve the staff stability, as well as balance your budget going forward.
I wonder if the confusion is, nowhere's, I think the confusion may be that we had, it was clearly stated in many of my budget presentations about a $1.1 million reliance on non-lapsing. Where I think Lou was now referring to $2 million is you take the 1.1, you add $892,000, and now we're going from that 1.1 to $2 million. So that, that is perhaps where some of that confusion lies, because it was, you know, it was always 1.1 million until we had to make these last-minute adjustments, hence tonight's motion. So that hopefully makes sense about where this money's coming from. It does not?
I, I seriously, like, I'm sitting here, I'm, I'm an intelligent human being, usually more intelligent earlier in the day. So I'm looking at, I'm trying to go back and look at all the, the budget things that you're referring to. So one of them was like, $2 million non-lapsing fund, restore the funding. So restore the funding, was that putting it back in to get us to the 2.61%? And then, like, all the increases, the salary increases that brought us to 3.63. So I guess my understanding, when we say restore the funding, that would mean like, put it back in, because restore means put it back in. So again, it's like, it's like word salad. And it's really difficult to understand what the salad I'm eating is. Is it like healthy salad?
And I appreciate that it is a lot of numbers flying around the room. First and foremost, I just want to make sure it is clear that we did initially use the 1.1 million. I just want to reference that in my, I'm finding my budget presentation for, I believe it was in the February 2nd. But I'll find it too. It's just my computer has decided to be very, very slow.
So I'm on the February 9th one, that I see you sub non-lapsing fund for 2021, 2022. And I'm totally not trying to do like an ah-ha. I'm totally not trying to be a jerk. I'm just trying to think. Oh, God.
Yeah, I apologize. My computer's just not cooperating quickly. Very slow in here.
What's the deadline on this?
Before the end of the fiscal year. We have to make a, is that a fair statement, Lou, before July 1st? We have to make sure we have a way to reconcile our budget.
Right. We can't really move forward without a reconciled budget. What are the, what is your authorization for us to manage during the year?
We should table.
I don't know either.
I agree.
Richard here, motion to table.
Second.
Guys, please, please follow Robert's rules of order. Okay? Thank you.
February 9th?
I'm on February 9th.
Listen, I am going to suggest that we bring this back up in our next meeting, two weeks from tonight. That should be the number one item on our new business. And then in the meantime, we can gather all of this information and have a chance to process it. So that'll give us at least two weeks. And then we can come back and then we can bring it up and discuss it.
If I, just for the sake of my sanity, if I could post this, it was part of the large budget drivers, and it was part of the presentation on February 2nd as well. Now I gotta find it. Gotta have to share. Those are full, we're on session. Let's play. There we go. So when the board heard my presentation about the big budget drivers, here's where we did say we were going to anticipate using $2 million in this year's fiscal budget. But we were also, in that same presentation, anticipating $1.1 million to be used to offset next year's budget with non-lapsing money. And the semantics, I apologize if, when I're using different semantics, but the, the bottom line is the same.
I'm just, again, so like, funding to backfill the use of non-lapsing fund resources in 2021, 2022, my understanding was when we went through this, was that that was like $2 million that we had to put, that, like, that was making the budget go up even more, because we had to backfill it. Am I the only one who understood it that way?
No.
Yeah? In order to not lay people off. Yeah, you're the only one who understood it that way.
Again, you're, this is last year's budget, so you weren't part of this process. But we really needed a 2.61% budget increase last year in order to not lay people off. The board made the determination during budget deliberations a year, a year or so ago.
The board made the determination during budget deliberations a year, a year or so ago, that rather than lay people off, we had the unlasting money available because the pandemic allowed us to have some residual funds, and that was the ter- termination. Let's use it as opposed to laying people off. So that was what we anticipated using in this year's budget, the year that we're in right now. Fast forward, this is the money, the one point one, two-eight million dollars that we have planned to use in next year's budget. However, that was if we got a three point six-three percent increase, which we did not. We got a lower increase. So again, the board deliberated over a series of meetings and said to determine, nope, we don't want to lay anyone off. So at that point, at the end of the road, the determination or the recommendation tonight is to then rely on this additional eight hundred and whatever the amount is right over there, eight ninety-four, seven thirty-two in next year's budget, in addition to the money that we had already planned on using, the one point one million dollars. So that's been discussed uh all the way through. I know it's confusing, but that is something that the board has uh considered over several meetings. The only thing that was left dangling is how do we make the budget whole or reconciled in light of what we ultimately got from the town, which was the two point four-six percent increase. So that's where it brings us to this evening. Um, Dr. Fletcher, if you feel that tabling this till our next meeting, now we are not, when is our next meeting?
Uh, the twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth, so we would have to add to the twenty-fifth. We would have to reconcile the budget again before July first. Uh, definitely not leave it to the last minute. And I don't know what additional information the board would need to make this decision, but I think it'd be helpful to have that ahead of time so that we could bring forward whatever missing data or information folks need.
I think that's the Yeah, they've, they've been up, but all right. There is no motion that has been made, so we don't need to table it, it's at the discretion of the chair. We did not read the motion. So I'm just going to ask that it be brought forward in our meeting in two weeks. And that any one of you board members that have questions, uh, you want to get any holes filled, please take care of doing that in the next two weeks, so that when we all come back together, we're all going to have all the information that we need, and we can make a firm decision in two weeks. Okay? All right, I'm sure sometimes this is not popular, but it's necessary. At this time, I'm going to open it up for public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Uh, if you are with us online, please raise your hand. And if you want to call in, the phone number to call is eight six zero, six six five, eight six five nine. And we do ask you to limit your uh questions or comments to three minutes. And give me one moment so I can get my timer. Okay, Dana Havens.
Hi, sorry, took me a second to find my button. Okay, um. I'm gonna not talk about your budget because I'm in agreement with what Danielle said, and I'm glad that you're going to revisit it. Um, but I am going to talk about the antirrational thing. Um, I watched the last couple of meetings, and I really got to say, I know everybody put a lot of work into this, and everybody wanted this. Um, but there has really been so much va- value engineering that it's not anything like what was presented at referendum. We have cut costs so much, we've cut the quality of materials so much that I'm thinking that maybe, I mean, let's face it, the economy's not getting better anytime soon. And you better just kind of maybe start reevaluating and thinking, you know, maybe we should clean the vents, like they're going to do anyways for the, for the remodel, and fix that roof, and just hold tight till everything drops down. Because in watching your budget presentation, you've, you've pulled millions and millions of dollars from your savings just to run things, and now you're going to build a building or rebuild a building that doesn't have everything that you really need, which means you're going to need to pull more money to complete the project once the project is done. And you, you guys are just going to go further and further into debt. I think you have to really rethink this. And um, that's it, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other public comments? I don't see any other hands. So do we have any further remarks by board members? Richard Laverrier, your hand is up.
Yes, uh, thank you, Dr. Fletcher. I think we should split fifty-fifty out of the non-lapses, non-lapsing fund and make cuts. We have not made enough cuts.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Havens, if you could put your hand down, I'd appreciate that. Sam Sharma?
I think what I got to say is like, we should think about upping our basically from our con- our contribution to the non-lapsing fund, it's at one percent. And, you know, state allows us to put in at least like up to two percent. And I think we should think about changing that to two percent, because we had like three point is based on what Lou just said, like, we had three point one two eight million. We used two mil just to uh in last year, and then we had to use another one point one two eight, and now we're going to use eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, so then what we're going to have is we're going to have a big fat egg, we we we'll have zero, we'll have no saving at all. So I think that's one of my concerns, because next year is going to be tough. It's going to be like seven percent increase, two million dollar hole that we got to fill. So we need to change, change the contribution from one percent to two percent. That's my recommendation.
All right, thank you. I don't see anyone else in the room. Ms. Pirati?
I just want to say that the last thirty minutes is a little bit rough, but I want to remember the students that were here and why we're all here. So I think we can all go home and sleep and and be refreshed and um, but just remember the students. Motion, Jordan.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Goodbye.